Mr Lawrence. I gather that there is no agreed, firm timetable for the necessary contraction of the case into one elongated day, and so it follows that, absent that, I am unable firmly to keep people to a timetable. So that will require a lot of responsible advocacy, and I mean, I'm not going to be able to contribute to it. Is that understood?
It's not as if we were unable to agree, my lord, we just knew we would be reasonable.
Yes.
And, um, we see the time.
Right.
And, um, if, for example, one of us was asked more questions than was anticipated, we would make adjustments accordingly.
Yes.
Lordship doesn't need to worry.
Good.
What I'm going to do by trying to do is to truncate my agreed one and a half hours to one hour, if, as a result of, as shown by the best, I think I'll slip over that a little bit, I will still be reducing my time proportionately by more than is required, having regard to the arrangement.
Very well.
And I'm sure we'll continue during the day in that spirit.
Well, we'll just have to leave it fluid like that, but I won't be able to crack any whips, will I?
If you get to a point where you feel you'd like us to actually work out...
Yeah. Well, if you're all happy to leave it fluid, then I'll accept that. Proceed, please, Mr Lawrence.
Um, very nice to see you back, my lady.
I apologize for all the disruption yesterday, and thank you.
I'm very pleased to see you back. Lords, my ladies, the Sunningwell case, twenty years and twenty-two days ago, the judgment of Lord Hoffman was on the 24th of June 1999. Opened the courts to a flood of litigation which is not yet abating on town and village greens. This is, by my calculations, the tenth case to reach the highest court. The others, if I just may mention which they are, are in 2000, which is when the report was, Sunningwell, 2004, Beresford, 2006, the Trapgrounds case, 2010, Lewis, and then I haven't got the dates exactly in my mind of the Betterment and Paddockho cases, numbers five and six, and then came Barcas and New Haven. My learned friends, Lancashire case being case number nine, ours being case number ten, and the eleventh case, TW Logistics, my lord, Lord Sales, sitting on this, um, on this court, was, I think, party to a decision to give permission to appeal in that case also. So, um, analysing for the purposes of these present proceedings, which of those cases are relevant on the first of the points that I want to address your lordships about, if I may, which is the implied permission point, which I've been given permission to try and seek permission to appeal, but in reality, I'm arguing the case, obviously, as if your lordships have given me permission to argue.
Shall we just deal with permission now, Mr Lawrence?
I'm not seeking it now, your lordships are, I'll be glad to have it now, but if your lordships are content to just hear the argument, then in due course, if you persuade the court, and after you've said you've given permission, um...
Yes, I think it might be better to hear briefly from Dr Bowes on this, if you didn't mind.
Um, I'm certainly meaning to address your lordship, if I may, on this issue, as if it is an issue before the court, having been given permission to seek permission to appeal on it.
Well, we know your application for permission, and it seems to me perhaps we should deal with it. Is that, what's wrong about that, Mr Lawrence? You look perplexed.
Oh, no, 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 but I hope I'll be given permission, but, but yes.
Of course you do.
Yes, indeed. So, um, if your lordship wishes to do that first, then of course I'm in your hands.
I think preliminarily, we thought that that might be appropriate. Preliminarily, we thought, forgive me.
Very well, my lord, um, thank you. What I was saying was that, in relation to that implied permission issue, um, the following of those cases that I have just mentioned have been directly concerned with attempts by landowners to defeat claims by alleging that use by the public was by right and not as of right. In the first of those cases, Sunningwell, the argument was that toleration of use should be equated to implied permission. That was Miss Cumberden's argument, which I successfully opposed before, um, before the court in Sunningwell. Lord Hoffman said that toleration and acquiescence were to be treated as equivalent to each other, and did not amount, toleration did not amount by itself to implied permission. So the next attempt the landowner made was in the Beresford case, this time by arguing that if the landowner, um, has encouraged local people to use the land by, as in that case, having a field which was left open for use and was mown, and which had a few seats on it, that encouragement should persuade the court to imply a permission. And, um, although the Beresford case has been disapproved by Barcas in other respects, um, the reasoning which persuaded the House of Lords in that case to accept the submissions that I was putting forward, still, as I understand it, survives, by which I mean that it remains the case that Lord Walker's statement, that the landowner has to, has to do something in order to enable a permission to be implied, remains good law. Yes? There's just one passage, though, in the Beresford case, a single sentence that I just want to remind your lordships of, if I may, in tab seventeen of the Main Authorities bundle, is in paragraph eighty-seven. MS, page number four-three-two. After referring to the fact that there had been a further hearing in the case in order to consider the effect of various statutory provisions which weren't referred to at the first hearing, including in particular section ten of the Open Spaces Act, section one-hundred-and-twenty-two and three of the Local Government Act, and section nineteen of the Local Government Miscellaneous Provisions Act, nineteen-seventy-six, his lordship went on, where land is vested in a local authority on a statutory trust, under section ten of the Open Spaces Act, nineteen-oh-six, inhabitants of the locality are beneficiaries of a statutory trust of a public nature, and it would be very difficult to regard those who use the park or other open spaces trespassers, even if that expression is toned down to tolerated trespassers. And then he says, the position would be the same if there were no statutory trust in the strict sense, but land had been appropriated for the purposes of public recreation. So, when we get to the third attempt by a landowner, this time we are dealing with public land, in the Barcas case, where there's an express statutory power which enables the publicly owned land to be used for recreation. In circumstances where the power is exercised, what Barcas holds is that a permission results, a revocable licence results, of which local people may know nothing. In other words, Barcas is the, is an instance of an exception to the rule established in Beresford, that the landowner has to do something to bring his permission to the attention of the public. Where the Barcas principle applies, nothing need be done to bring anything to the attention of the public. And the fourth occasion on which a similar such argument succeeded was the New Haven case, because there, there was a bylaw making...
You're going to show us the passage in Barcas, are you?
Sorry, my lord.
You're going to show us the passage in Barcas?
Uh, yes.
Well, I mean, whenever...
Um, yes, indeed, I'm sorry, my lord. Um, Barcas is at a tab sixteen in the Authorities bundle, and, um, the passage I had in mind was the passage at paragraph twenty-three, where Lord Newburger says, first of all, he deals with my argument in paragraph twenty, if your lordships, MS three-eight-seven, my lady, I'm so sorry, I should have said, um, the argument that I put forward is reflected in paragraph twenty, if your lordships have scanned that, and then his lordship says, in my judgment, this argument is as compelling as it is simple, so long as land is held under provisions such as section twelve of the nineteen-eighty-five Act, it appears to me that members of the public have a statutory right to use the land for recreational purposes, and therefore they use the land by right and not as trespassers. And then he expands on section twelve in paragraph twenty-three, he says of it, that they bestow a power on a local housing authority to devote land such as the field for public recreational use, albeit subject to the consent of the minister, at any rate until the land is removed from the ambit of that section. Where land is held for that purpose, and members of the public then use the land for that purpose, the obvious and natural conclusion is that they enjoy a public right, or a publicly based licence to do so. If that were not so, members of the public using land for recreation held by a local authority for the statutory purpose would be trespassing on the land, which cannot be correct, of course, and then he says, authority could place conditions on such use, and goes on, similarly, the local authority would clearly be entitled to withdraw the licence, permanently or temporarily.
Yes, I mean, that's a specific provision which you see set out on page three-eight-four, paragraph five, so it doesn't really help you here.
Well, you've got to carry the argument further forward, haven't you, Mr Lawrence? From these situations...
Yes, I do have to, I do have to, and I'm going to.
Very well.
So, um, the fourth example that I was giving was from the, from the New Haven case itself. Um, New Haven was a case, as it happens, where before their lordships got to consider statutory incompatibility, they considered an argument comparable to this argument, and the argument was, by reason of the lawful exercise of a bylaw making power, the result of which was a bylaw which, on its proper construction, permitted the public to use the land, the net result of the exercise of that power was that the public acquired a licence to use the land, a permission to use the land, just as effective to prevent their use being as of right as it had been in the Barcas case. And, um, the relevant passages from that decision are at paragraph sixty-nine to seventy-one in the speech of Lord Newburger.
Okay, well, you won't be surprised to hear, we've read the New Haven case very carefully.
I was hoping...
Some of us more than once, so we can, we can take these references by you to New Haven quite quickly.
Well, my lord, I was proposing not even, if that's okay, because...
Thank you.
But I was just doing it in deference to Lord Conworth having invited me just to remind the court which the relevant passages in Barcas were.
Thank you.
But that was based very specifically on the, on the bylaws in that case.
Say that again, will I...
It was based on the bylaws in that case.
Yes, yes, it was.
It was within a specific catch of the context.
It flowed from the exercise of a bylaw making power which, once exercised, resulted in the public acquiring the right.
And I put it on a much more general basis, on the use of the beach, but again, that was a very specific context.
There was nothing, there was nothing, no suggestion that any members of the public were aware of the bylaws either, in the New Haven case.
Right.
Now, my lords... I mean, the bylaw said, you can't bathe there, and that was construed, was it not, as being permission to bathe somewhere else in the area?
Or you, or, or, or keep your dogs on a leash, something like that.
Yes, quite.
Yeah, that kind of provision.
That kind of provision.
Exactly. Now, my lord, another case, and now we're getting much closer to the present, which implicitly held that an implied permission can come automatically into being, um, in the same sort of way, was the Goodman case, um, a decision of Mr Justice Dove, which is referred to, um, in our, our, um, our case, I'll just fill your lordships' notes, referred to in our case in a footnote on MS two-nine-zero-nine, and it's a case at footnote eighty, where I'm simply quoting from what the judge said for convenience at the bottom of two-nine-zero-nine in our case, um, Mr Justice Dove says this, "When the power under which the authority holds the land comprehends recreational use as a purpose, then recreational use by the public will be by right, not as of right." And the, uh, the words in square brackets are, of course, my, my words, which I inserted in order to say what I'm contending is the sense of what his lordship was saying in that case. Now, my lord, I just want to say a little bit more about the Goodman case now, if I may, than I did when I was preparing my case, and it's because of the intervention of my learned friend, Mr Beale, last week, when he provided a note for your lordships and your ladyships, designed really to meet the point which I am now arguing, to the extent that that point had a capacity to make things difficult for him in the Lancashire case. And so, um, it seemed to me that the way, the way that I needed to deal with this was to tell him that, as I did, that I would be wanting to refer to the Goodman case in a little bit more detail, and also to provide for him, as I have done, a copy of a map, which I would like now to a diagram, which I would like simply to circulate, which everyone else has had last week already, to make the understanding of the facts in the Goodman case somewhat simpler than would otherwise be the position.
Thank you, Mr Lawrence.
Thank you. I did this also, I may say, while it's being handed around, knowing that Lady Arden was on the panel, because she has more than once said judicially and extrajudicially that we should use plans more often and include them in our judgements. And so I had those words of hers in mind, with which, if I may say so, I profoundly agree. Um, Area One is the area edged blue, A-E-F-B. Uh, it was the area, notionally, of course, here illustrated, acquired in nineteen-fifty-one by the council for recreation, and I've provided a reference to the judgment to see that that is the case. Area Two, let me jump straight down, if I may, to, um, Area Six, the area A-C-D-B, is part of the area acquired in nineteen-fifty-one, which throughout remained subject to use for recreation. Therefore, it was conceded at an appropriate point in the case by my learned friend, Mr Edwards, who was for the public in that case, to have been used throughout the twenty-year period in that case by right. It was so conceded because ever since the time that it was first acquired in nineteen-fifty-one, the northern part of the land, Area A-C-D-B, continued to be used for the purposes for which it had originally been acquired, namely for recreation. Yes? The fate of Area Two, A-C-E-F-D, was however different. Um, that's the area tinted blue, it's an area of six-point-six acres. Um, if you look at note seven, you will see that there's a slight, um, difficulty understanding why the judge refers to the, um, to that area, together with the area I'll come to in a moment, below, as being six-point-six acres, when the inspector made it clear that the area with which I'm now concerned, C-E-F-D, was the six-point-six acre area, but nothing turns on that. Um, that area, C-E-F-D, was appropriated on the twenty-sixth of September nineteen-eighty-nine, following the advertisement procedure prescribed by subsection two A of section one-hundred-and-twenty-two, to which Mr Edwards referred yesterday. That procedure was required because the land wasn't, was until then held for recreation. It was appropriated for industrial slash employment development purposes, and I give the reference. Yes? Then the former railway sidings were acquired the following year in nineteen-ninety, Area E-G-H-F. And I then identify, in relation to Area Four, the whole area, A-E-G-H-F-D, that became the area subject to, of an application to register as a TVG, and on ground one, the initial challenge to the inspector's refusal to register it as a TVG. So the inspector had refused to area, to, 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 to register that area, but then Area Five, C-G-H-D, the, the green area which includes the piece of land also acquired in nineteen-ninety, that became the ultimate focus of the case. Yes. The reason why it became the ultimate focus of the case is what I have said in relation to Area, um, Area One, and also in relation to Area Six, um, that because that area continued throughout the period of the twenty-year period in the case, which ran, I think, from about nineteen-ninety-one to two thousand and eleven, I think that was the twenty-year period in the case, that, that had been throughout used for recreation, Mr Edwards conceded, and he would have done so on the basis of what Lord Walker said in the Beresford case at paragraph eighty-seven, that I have referred you to, he conceded that that land had throughout been held by right, and so the focus of his case began, was on the six-point-six acre area that I've identified, together with a small piece beyond. So, the...
So that's the area appropriated for employment use?
Sorry, my lord.
Area appropriated for employment use?
Yes, yes.
Plus the, plus the bit at the bottom.
Yes, the, the, the bit at the bottom had not been appropriated for employment in nineteen-eighty-nine, because it was only acquired in nineteen-ninety, and for analytical purposes, my lord, you might as well just forget the bit at the bottom, and just concentrate on the area tinted, tinted blue.
Okay.
So, the principles that I've been talking about in relation to Barcas and New Haven, I say, implicitly come under consideration in two ways in this case, in relation to the northern part of the land owned by the council since nineteen-fifty-one, that had been acquired for and remained appropriate, remained held for recreational purposes, and accordingly, use of that was conceded by Mr Edwards to have been throughout by right. As to the, as to the critical southern part of the land, the area tinted blue, the judge, I say, on a proper understanding of the decision, would have held that use of that area would have been by right, if only it had been, as, as counsel for the Secretary of State was arguing in that case, subsequently re-appropriated to recreational use, following its appropriation to employment uses in nineteen-eighty-nine. And so it's easier if I just tell you this, rather than trying to get it all out of the case, and your lordships can look at the case afterwards. The argument that she was putting forward was, although the land was appropriated to employment uses in nineteen-eighty-nine, it was re-appropriated at some subsequent time as a result of the way in which the land was dealt with to use for recreation.
Sorry, who was arguing that?
Secretary of State for the...
Secretary of State was trying to say it was not, it was not a village green. Secretary of State was trying to say it was not a village green in that case.
It, it, sorry, that, it was a village, she was saying, council on behalf of the Secretary of State was saying, the land should not be registered as a village green. I'm sorry, my lord, yes.
Everyone gets confused, because here the Secretary of State is trying to say it should be a village green, so one gets...
Was saying it should not be a village green...
Yes.
Owing to its having been re-appropriated at some time after nineteen...
By implication, re-appropriated.
To use for recreation. So...
And that argument prevailed?
Um, it didn't, and the reason that it didn't is that the judge held that for there to be such an effective re-appropriation, there needed to have been a deliberative decision-making process, of which there was no evidence.
Very well.
Now, so Goodman is therefore, if I can just sum it up, is an instance of what happens when, following a properly deliberative process, a council decides both that it no longer needs land for employment purposes, and that it does now need the land for recreation.
And it appropriates it.
That's what she was saying.
Yes, I mean, there's no issue about that, that if it's appropriated for recreational purposes...
She was, wasn't accepting that, Council for the Secretary of State...
No, but we're not interested in what she's accepting, we're interested in what's being decided, and it's not binding on us anywhere.
So, it follows, therefore, that there are two situations, one, where the land is acquired for recreation purposes, that triggers the Barcas principle, that's the northern area, and so does appropriating it properly for recreation purposes trigger the principle, provided that a proper deliberative process has been gone through. What I now want to do is to show you, lordships, how this applies more directly still to our case, by inviting you to look at section one-hundred-and-twenty of the Local Government Act, in the Main Authorities bundle, tab three, at MS eighty-two. And I'll just begin, if I may, by, um, saying what I say this section does provide for and what it does not provide for. So we're on an MS eighty-two, section one-hundred-and-twenty, subsection, um, subsection one, your lordships and ladyships might scan, talking about a principal council having power to acquire by agreement land, and then two, a principal council may acquire by agreement any land for any purpose for which they are authorised by this or any other enactment to acquire land, notwithstanding that the land is not immediately required for that purpose, and until it is required for the purposes for which it was acquired, the land acquired under this subsection may be used for the purposes of any of the council's functions. So what this section is doing is providing for a situation that had previously been provided for, for the first time in the Local Government Act of nineteen-thirty-three, in section one-hundred-and-fifty-eight, which is a tab four, uh, four-zero in, in the Authorities bundle. It was providing for a situation where, unlike that in Goodman, where upon acquisition in nineteen-fifty-one, the intention was to use all the land for recreation, there was, the councils considered specifically that it, although it was acquiring the land, say, for industrial purposes, it, the land was not immediately acquired, required for those purposes, and as a result, the council was given power to hold the land for any of its other functions, including, of course, recreation. What the, what the section, and what I'm about to say will help when you come to look at the Goodman case, because there was confusion about this which it took me a long time to unravel. What the section does not provide for is for a comparable state of affairs to obtain if land is, having been acquired for some purpose or other, later appropriated to a different purpose. In other words, it does not contain words such as the following, if I can just invite your lordships to read the first line and a half, and then continue as follows, and this is, this is my notional drafting. "Notwithstanding that, on its applying its mind to the matter at the time of acquisition, it decides or appreciates, or appreciates that the land is not immediately required for the purpose in question." The, um, the, I'll rephrase it if I may, my lord.
Do we have this in your case, Mr Lawrence? Do we have this in your case, because then we can follow without noting it.
No, this, this bit is not in the case, it's as a result of Mr Beale's intervention.
I see, very well.
And my appreciation that I needed to look more closely...
And this is all within your hour that you're hoping to finish your submission today.
Yes, I know, my lord, I'm, I'm obviously...
Very well.
...I'll finish in my hour, but the, the point that I just want to make is that this does not cover section one-hundred-and-twenty subsection two, a situation where an authority appropriates land to a different purpose, it is not allowed at that time to say to itself, well, what we're going to do is not immediately use it for that purpose for which we've appropriated it. In the Goodman case, the argument proceeded to a large part as if it did so provide, although Mr Edwards had a technical point on which the judge in the event was not required to rule, which was that section one-hundred-and-twenty subsection two is only available... which was that section one hundred and twenty subsection two is only available in a case of an original acquisition, where.
But, but Mister, I mean, how does this help us in this case?
I'm about to come to you.
Because Goodman was no doubt very interesting, but we're not bound by it.
No, of course you're not.
And the facts are obviously quite complicated.
Of course, of course not, but the, the, this, this is the background against which, um, wha- what, against which my submission arises. Because my submission arises in a situation where, um, land which is held by an authority, um, for a particular purpose, or any public authority, subject to duties to use it in the way that we are subject to, is not for the time being needed for those purposes.
And you say they can use it for any other of their functions.
And, and we say that it.
Including recreation.
It is implicit, and always has been implicit, long before these statutory provisions were enacted, it has been implicit that an authority, as a matter of common sense, should be able to put land to what I call meantime uses, um, pending it's being required for the purposes for which it is held. And that when it does so, the land is just as much held subject to an implied permissive licence as it would be if it were, for example, to be specifically acquired for recreation, or later appropriated for recreation, or if the situation was that arising under section one hundred and twenty subsection one.
So it's that last step, which is the novel step, that you've got to get over.
So, so, my lord.
That last step is the one that's important.
Yes, it is, yes. And what is important, the, what is critical about it is whether you need a decision, a deliberative process, in order to trigger the resulting implied permission. Or whether, as I would contend, it is sufficient, and as I have contended in, in my, in my application on this point, it is sufficient for the authority simply to look at a piece of land for which it currently has no need to put it to the use for which it holds the land, and then by submitting to its being used for, um, for, for general recreational purposes, is it enough for the authority then to say, we have taken a sufficient decision that the land should si- be so held in order to, uh, trigger our right to rego- require, to, uh, to, 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 to argue that the land is now held subject to the same sort of, um, implied permission as, as arises where it is actually, in an authority context, deliberately appropriated to recreational use. And so we say that, or, and it hasn't, it isn't really suggested, in our case against me, as I understand it, that we don't have an implied power to put the land to recreational use. It isn't suggested that the, um, provided the circumstances are right, um, the result of putting the land to recreational use would be implicit implied permission. What is said is, there's no evidence of any decision having been taken to take advantage of this power, under the Great Eastern Railway case and so on. And so I say, there are two matters that I pray in aid, in support of saying, uh, of dealing with that point. The first is to say, look at the facts. The passage of time in and of itself is sufficient to show that at some point, and it doesn't matter what that point was, a decision must have been taken to, um, to submit to the use of the land in this way, always on the basis, however, that in order to act intraviruses, um, it, it would have to be the result of the taking of that decision, that notional decision, that the land was held permissively, so that if and when at some time in the future, the landowner wanted to, needed to use the land for the purposes for which it was held, at that time in the future, he wouldn't be liable to be met by an application to register the land as a town or village green.
But what's wrong with the conventional view of that permission requires, um, acts of permission, specific acts of permission, including communication to those permitted?
Well, what's wrong with it is that it doesn't survive the cases of Barkas and New Haven themselves. Because those are cases, my lord, which establish an exception to that, to that principle for publicly held land.
But where there's been a public act, as in Barkas, uh, uh, acquisition of the land under a section which gives a public right, or indeed implicitly in the other case.
But likewise.
There's probably some sort of, not necessarily communication to every member of the public, but some public act, which makes it clear that this is being.
What, what, what is going with this to me is, is, is to say, um, i- i- in, 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 I think he's with me to the extent of saying, um, something needs to be done, albeit that it may need only to be done within the confines of the relevant public body itself, but something needs to be done.
A public act.
Some kind of public act needs to be done. So dealing with that, my first argument is the one that I put forward. Then I invite, I invite your lordships to have, your ladyships to have regard to the fact that set out in the, uh, inspector's report, and also in Miss Abigail Condry's, um, witness statement, which is in the, in the bundle. She points out that the land was designated as strategic open land in two thousand, and she says that there was no objection to that by, by, by my client or his predecessors at that time. And, and I say in addition that there was the evidence of Mister Heinsohn, that he thought, um.
Sorry, can I just begin? These are set out in your case, aren't they?
Um, the, um, the, no, that's not in the case either, my lord, because this is dealing.
Well, we, I mean.
This is, this is dealing with the, with the point that I'm just, I'm trying to respond to from Mister.
Well, no, you're trying to make the case that there's an implied permission, that's good enough.
Yes, of course.
And you're relying on public acts.
Yes.
And we need to know what those public acts are.
And of course, of course you do.
And are they not set out in your case?
Let me just show you, if I may, the, um.
Are they not set out in your case? The public acts on which you rely?
The, the, yes, my lord, what I have said in my case is that, is that if, if I'm wrong in saying that no decision needs to be, uh, no actual decision needs to be identified, then what I'm saying in my case is that the presumption of regularity, uh, comes to my aid. And the presumption of regularity is most conveniently discussed in the case at tab seven in the Authorities Bundle, the case of Call, of Call de Gravel.
Well, I know, but that's another point. Are you relying on public acts? If so, where do we find them?
I'm, I'm, I'm not able to identify any public act. What I'm able to identify, and that's correct, I've said that right from the beginning, that I can't, I can't say there's actual evidence of a public act. What I can say is that there are various facts and matters, which when taken in conjunction, um, assist me, if I need a public act, with my submission, that, um, uh, the presumption of regularity comes to my aid. So I will, if I just may, um, take your lordships to, um, tab seven in the bundle.
Yes, of course.
The Call de Gravel decision of, uh, Mister Justice Brown, or as he then was, um, it was a case in which, um, wha- what had to be, what had to be proved, um, was that a certain planning permission had actually been issued. And he says on page M S one five four, um, after dealing with a lot of the detailed facts of the case, he says in the first paragraph, it must be very significant fact that there's no document here, and no trace of a document ever having existed, which could be a written planning permission. So prima facie, this is ba- going badly for, for the plaintiff, who is seeking to invoke the presumption of regularity. And then he says lower down in the judgment, therefore, in my judgment, the outcome of this case does turn on the burden of proof. The plaintiff is seeking a declaration that there's a planning permission. Since they are coming to court for relief, the burden of proof is obviously basically on them. But in certain cases, the law raises a presumption. And he refers to the Latin tag, he calls it the presumption of regularity. That presumption is that where there's been a long term enjoyment of a right, which can only have been come into existence by virtue of a grant of some other legal act, then the law presumes, in the absence of proof to the contrary, that there was a lawful origin. This is the historical basis for which the doctrine of lost modern grant was developed in relation to easements, given the long enjoyment of a right of way, then the court presumed the existence of a grant of a right to use that right of way. He says he's not for a moment suggesting that the technicalities and legal consequences applicable to lost modern grant are applicable to the present case, but he says the legal basis is the same, namely a presumption from long use and long enjoyment.
Yeah, but I mean, it's completely different facts, if you see from the head note. Forty years, the, the authority had passed a resolution approving an application for mission back in nineteen forty six, and for forty years everyone had proceeded on the assumption there was a permission.
In our case, about, on the findings of the inspector, the first public use of this land took place in about nineteen sixty five.
But there's no background of anyone having actually taken a decision to approve anything.
So. My lord, the, wha- what, what we say in this case is that the long use, without any objection to the public, starting as long ago as, as the mid sixties, in fact, early nineteen seventies, I think was the time it really began, by nineteen ninety three, the land was in general use by the.
No, I understand, you say long use is enough, but I'm just saying that this particular case doesn't take you very far, because it's got very special facts.
With respect, with respect, that's not right, because where, um, wha- wha- uh, as, as I read the case, um, the stat- he, the statutory duty to, if I can just refer to the passage that I was coming to, um, um, he, he says o- of the presumption that it arises where the validity of act, of an act depends on the existence of state of facts, which cannot with the passage of time be proved. And the presumption is that the statutory authority, in this case, had acted lawfully in accordance with its duty. And then he says, i- in the next paragraph, if I may just read that, um, having resolved to grant the application for planning approval number three three nine, the council was under an immediate statutory duty to notify its decision to the applicants, section two five of the nineteen forty three act, he, that's at M S one hundred and forty. If it did not do so, it was in breach of its statutory duty. I don't think the law should start from the position that the local authority failed to perform its statutory duty. On the contrary, one must start from the position that one assumes that it did perform its statutory duty, unless and until it is shown to the contrary. Now, in our case, in my submission, there's an equivalent. The duty, if I put it in duty terms, the duty of my authority was not to submit to the use of its land for meantime recreational purposes in circumstances which, at the end of twenty years, which was, would be liable to give rise to the land becoming registered as a town or village green. In order for it to do its duty, therefore, at some point, it needed to take a decision to the effect that it was happy for the public to be doing this in order to tr- trigger the very implied permission, which is triggered by cases such as Barkas, New Haven, appropriation cases referred to in Goodman, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And of course, it is unfortunate in a way that this argument is being deployed for the first time in this house, and so you, lordships, don't have the decision or consideration by the courts below of, 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 of the, of the submission, and you having to look at it ab initio. But I say, in order to avoid a situation where my client ends up being found to have acted ultraviruses instead of intraviruses, it is right that it should, should be presumed, pursuant to the presumption of regularity, that it did what it had to do in order to trigger an implied permission.
But for a meantime use, is it? Yes.
For a meantime use.
Meantime use by a statutory authority.
Does it follow that in the New Haven case, the, uh, concentration by the court on the bylaws was actually beside the point? They could have reached the implied permission conclusion without reference to the bylaws?
I think they needed the bylaws, my lord, because without a bylaw on whose proper construction the public were being permitted to use the beach for recreation, it would not have been possible to say that, uh, an implied permission comparable to that which arose in the more direct case, which was the Barkas case, had arisen. They didn't have a separate power, I don't believe, under the eighteen forty seven act, to cause any part of the beach to be used for recreation. If they had had such a power and had exercised it, then the case would have been on all fours with Barkas. It's one removed from Barkas. It's, 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 it's exercising a power they did have, which was to make bylaws. And, and then they made those bylaws, and the bylaws, properly understood, had the consequence that they permitted, uh, recreational use of the beach, giving rise to the, um, applica- another application of the principle that in appropriate circumstances, an implied permission can arise, of which the public has no knowledge at all.
We must let you get on.
I, I think that that deals with what I want to say on, 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 on this point.
Thank you.
And, and bearing in mind that I'm under, um, uh, and under pressure of time, can I just deal with the next point by saying, having, uh, heard what my learned friend, um, had to say in support of his argument on statutory incompatibility, um, uh, if you'll just turn to my case, uh, for a moment, um, on, on this. We have, um, we have said in our case that it, at paragraph thirty eight at M S two nine one one, that we endorse entirely the submissions made by the appellant in Lancashire in support of ground one. And, uh, having heard my learned friend, um, uh, yesterday, uh, that remains, um, uh, very much our position. Um, in relation to what else we, um, uh, seek to say, my lord, on the subject of, um, uh, statutory incompatibility, uh, can I just invite attention, um, without, without reading them in any detail, to paragraphs forty one, forty three, forty five, forty five, forty six, fifty, and fifty one, where we summarize the position in this way at M S two nine one one five. Refer to forty one, forty three, forty five, forty six, fifty and fifty one. Uh, N H S P S's obligation is to hold the land so that the clinical commissioning group can provide hospital and hospital related facilities mentioned in section three of the act as amended.
Yes, obviously, we, 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 to, to understand your statutory incompatibility point, we've been reaching first and foremost for the statute, um, which gives you functions in this case. And it's a pretty indirect function. Uh, we needn't look it up, but two, two, three, one of the two thousand and six act is pretty indirect.
It is, it is, but it's.
Very well.
Its net result, we would say, my lord, is as set out in paragraph forty one.
Yes.
Um, that, uh, our only statutory function, and in fact duty in respect of the land, is to hold it exclusively to enable the local C C G to exercise its statutory health functions by commissioning statutory health services on the land. It exists and holds the land only for those purposes. And so therefore, my lord, looking again at fifty one, line five, the provision of healthcare related facilities on this, on the land would not merely impede its use for recreation, it would prevent it permanently for all practical purposes. And so, um, so, so, uh, the, 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 the point in, 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 in its essence, um, is, um, a- apparently really quite a simple point at the end of the day. And it is a point that can be expressed best, I would, uh, in, I would respectfully suggest, by, uh, by, by having regard to what position it would be if it was possible to, um, dedicate land as a village green, leaving aside the recent statutory provision which allows that, and ask whether, um, the exercise of a power to, to, uh, dedicate this land, our land, as a town or village green, could possibly be within the powers of my client, under section two hundred and twenty one. And my argument simply is that if it purported to do that, it would be acting spectacularly ultraviruses in so doing. And that, um, one, one can test the matter by reference to the way in which the, the, the position would have fallen to be considered if we were dealing with, say, a question such as arose in the B T C case as to whether, um, it was compatible with the functions of the railway to grant a, or to dedicate a public right of way across the railway. In that case, we haven't looked at the case. In that case, we haven't looked at the case, there isn't time to do so now, but in that case, the public had been using a bridge across the railway on foot for more than twenty years as a right, and the question was whether under section thirty one of the Highways Act nineteen eighty, or the its then equivalent, subsection eight was triggered so as to say that it wasn't possible for a deemed dedication to arise because of the incompatibility between the purposes for which the railway was held and the exercise of a public right of way in that way. And it's a point which is becoming of extremely considerable importance now with there being tremendous resistance to the creation of public rights of way on the level across railway lines. The argument that is being put forward by Network Rail and was put forward successfully in one case that I was appearing for the ramblers in was, you can't have, you can't acquire across the railway line a public right of way without there being incompatibility between the public's rights and the duty to run the railway. That was the argument. Notwithstanding that there were lots and lots of such paths that had come into being over the same stretch of railway in the past by long use, that was the result of that case. And similarly, if you imagine a private right of way established by my client right across the middle of its land, a question would arise as to whether the grant of a private right of way could stand with its obligation to hold its land for the purposes set out in section two two one, and I say it certainly could not. But those cases pale into insignificance compared to what happens, and it explains the ten cases in the Supreme Court on village greens, compared to what happens when land becomes a village green. What becomes, what happens, according to Lord Hoffman in the Oxfordshire case, is that the public acquire rights to recreate themselves all over the land. That's what they do. And if the land hasn't been used for any purpose by the landowner beforehand, that trumps any use whatsoever that the landowner may later want to make of the land. So, my lord, although I'm putting the matter, your lordship may think, over simply, I am just saying, and I'm responding in a way to thoughts that were put in my mind by Mr. Beale's argument, I'm just saying that this is a, this is an easy case where one would imagine Lord Hodg and Lord Newburgh in New Haven, if they'd been thinking of it, saying that that certainly is a case of a public authority holding land for purposes which are going to be wholly frustrated if the land is used by the public for, the land having been registered as a green, and therefore the statutory incompatibility principle, which by the way I was against and had successfully argued against in lower courts, and my lord, Lord Carnworth agreed with me in New Haven and so on, it was inevitable that once a statutory incompatibility principle was recognized, people were going to start saying, well, what is the principles basis of the limits of that principle, of that statutory incompatibility principle? And I don't get much help from, speaking for myself, out of all the stuff about whether there's specific duties and all the rest of it. To my mind, one looks at what is going to happen if the land is registered and asks a simple question, well, can that stand? Can that realistically stand with the public having the rights they acquire if it becomes a village green? So that's what I want to say on statutory incompatibility.
Can I just declare how that relates to your implied permission argument? Because you were referring us to the Local Government Act, section one twenty, and the power to use land for purposes like recreation. That doesn't apply to your client, does it? Your not, your client, the NHS.
Yes, it does, my lord.
Does it?
Yes, because any public authority, and those are the cases of Teddington and.
Sorry, no, section one twenty applies to principal councils, which you're not.
No.
No, you're relying on a more general principle of power to use for incidental purposes, and you're saying, well, but yeah, well, I understand that, but I didn't understand how section one twenty helped you, but it doesn't.
No, 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 it's the reason I've looked in detail at section one hundred and twenty is the desirability of consistency of treatment of this whole question of implied permission as between local authorities such as Mr. Edwards's.
Well, I understand that.
Other public bodies.
Thank you.
And it's a close analysis of what local authorities can and cannot do that throws tremendous light, I would respectfully suggest, on what it is.
Yes, but it's by analogy rather than direct.
Indeed, it is. I should, I'm sorry, my lord, if I didn't make that clear in the rather hasty submissions that I'm trying to make. But the other aspect of what my lord, Lord Carnworth puts to me that is just worth stressing and just is that, of course, I'm arguing statutory incompatibility, but I don't need statutory incompatibility if I succeed on implied permission, any more than the dock company needed statutory incompatibility, having succeeded in relation to its bylaw argument in New Haven. But that didn't stop the Supreme Court going ahead and effectively saying, well, quite apart from the question of implied permission, there's a whole statutory incompatibility question that they would have won on that as well. And so we invite this court to do exactly the same thing and to uphold our appeal on those two grounds. Now, finally, in my last few minutes, I'm therefore not at all keen on the fallback position of future use. I invite the court to allow my appeal on one or other or both of my primary grounds. But my lord, Lord Carnworth said what he said in New Haven, and, my lord, having been round these houses now for the last twenty years and more of my own career, may I just be permitted to say this, and it is that it is highly desirable that public land, which isn't currently needed for the use for which it is held, should be made available for public use. That is, it is a reflection of what Lord Justice Bowen said in Blount and Layard in eighteen ninety one, when he said it is a very bad thing in a free country for the law effectively to require landowners to be churlish about their rights. And that famous, that famous passage is referred to by Lord Hoffman in Sunningwell, it didn't avail Miss Cameron in that case, but there's a whole bit of me which feels it ought to have done. And it remains highly desirable that the law should be laid down, if you can possibly do it, in a way which is going to encourage public authorities and indeed any to use land in a way that will enable people to do no harm while they're there, but can be stopped when the land is needed for its purpose. And that with respect, it is what my lord, my lord, Lord Carnworth's suggestion of a future use solution most emphatically does. What it does is to say that although the land can be registered as a village green, although it can be registered as a village green, and although, Lord Hoffman, okay, Lord Hoffman said people get rights once that happens, Lord Carnworth reluctantly accepting that that's the position, he has to, it's the law now, but why not just say, when the public then need in future to be turned off so that the land can be used for its purpose, it was publicly owned land, that can be done. And then in relation to a landowner like mine, what you also say is that while the land is held by that landowner, it's because the landowner anticipates that with the changes in medical, medical science and all the rest of it, there may come a time when it does need its land for medical purposes and therefore holds on to it. It has so far for seventy years and may wish to do so for a while longer. But if it comes to the conclusion that at some point in the future, the best deployment of its resources is the sale of the land and the use of the proceeds to acquire another piece of land somewhere else, that ought to be written also into the Carnworth principle, the Carnworth future use principle. Otherwise, you have an absurd situation. You have a situation where a client, a landowner like my client, is put under pressure in order to save its land, to build a hospital on that land, and then to bring public use to an end pursuant to the future use principle, even though that isn't the ideal place to build a hospital, it otherwise, the consequence is if it sells the land, it gets nothing because no purchase is going to pay anything for land where the public have got the right to continue to use it. And so although I heard what my lord, Lord Wilson said yesterday with some trepidation, imagining this moment at which I was going to have to say, why, with respect, I don't think that meets the point, I'm now seeking to meet it and saying, if we don't win on our major two points, then in order for the future use to be of any real use to my client, it ought to be, the principle ought to be adapted and adopted so as to allow us to sell the land with vacant possession when we want to, free of any village green rights.
Could that be built into the statutory incompatibility argument?
Sorry, my lady?
Could that be built into the statutory incompatibility argument as well?
Ladyship would need to say just how you think it could be, because we're assuming now I have failed on statutory incompatibility, or here's an additional way in which I might succeed on statutory incompatibility.
Statutory incompatibility at the moment, negatives registration. And so we would need to be quite imaginative to understand how this can feed in to statutory incompatibility.
Absolutely right. This is a point which you told Mr. Edwards you were not going to stop him from arguing, and although you might have done for the reason Mr. Beale gives. So what we're contemplating here is a last throw of the dice, which maybe will need another case in order to be, as it were, to produce a result from, which is where we've lost on statutory incompatibility.
We understand that.
We've lost on implied permission.
Indeed.
And we're inviting this court to say, but don't worry, there's.
The solution on my right hand.
There's a solution on your right hand.
Absolutely.
And he stands by, ready to help, I'm sure, whenever you need it, my lord. Those are my submissions.
So it could appear, Mr. Lawrence. Well, well done. That's almost exactly eleven o'clock. Now, on your self-imposed ordinance, the NHS company has run out of time, but purely as a matter of courtesy, let me ask Mr. Clay whether he follows. Thank you, Mr. Clay. Well then, I think it's your turn, Mr. Beale.
So, my lords and my ladies, I appear as important and appreciate only in the Lancashire case, and I just make that point at the outset, because in the Lancashire appeal, there are effectively two issues or two overall issues, a statutory incompatibility issue, which is the point of principle, which I think is why I'm here at least in the Lancashire case, and then an essentially factual issue about the holding power effectively on the facts of this case. They both have some sub-issues.
In Lancashire case, you're here really because it's your inspector who made the relevant decision.
I'm so sorry, my lord.
It's your inspector who made the decision.
Yes, that's why the section stays here. Sorry, but I mean the reason that this case has reached this level.
Oh, no, I know, but I mean, your particular interest is representing the inspector's decision.
Absolutely right, yes. And so, my lords, I'll take those two issues in turn and deal with the sub-issues as they arise in the course of that. If, if time permits and if the court is willing to allow me to, I propose to say something very short, and it will be very short, on the issue that Mr. Lawrence has been developing this morning. Now, I'm in the court's hands on that.
We've got your very helpful notes.
You've got my notes. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to press you very hard on that, but let's.
Within the time that you think you've got, if you want to say something about it, please do so.
How long have you allowed yourself? How long have you allowed yourself?
Well, originally, I was allowed two hours. I'll do my best to truncate slightly. I think that given that Mr. Lawrence has already made up half an hour, if I make up a short period of time, I hope that that's acceptable to the court. I think those following me are quite anxious that I deal, especially with your statutory incompatibility point, so.
Well, that's the important one.
That's an acceptable way of dealing with it. Let me turn straight to the statutory incompatibility issue. Can I simply start?
Can I just ask you, want to get out of the way, to help me on two things on the statute, the two thousand and six act?
Yes, I was going to go to it, but by all means. No, no, well, please ask the question.
Well, the one was the getting rid of registration. Section sixteen enables you to apply for deregistration on page twenty seven of the NHS.
Yes.
And, I mean, it requires, but you need to have exchanged land if it's more than so much. So there is a procedure for getting rid of registration.
Yes.
But it does require exchange land.
That, I mean, in short, the answer to that question is.
Appropriation, but you do have to go through this procedure.
In short, the answer is yes. So there are some mechanisms for getting rid of it, but it's fair to say that they're not easy and.
The other thing I couldn't find is there was, second ten of the nineteen sixty five act said that the register was conclusive of the matters stated therein. Where does one find that in the two thousand and six?
My lord, off the top of my head, I don't know the answer to that. Can I come back to one?
Someone will come back with that, because it was a point which was relied on by the House of Lords in the Trapgrounds case.
Yes, yes, yes.
It seems to have disappeared.
I don't think it's, would be a matter of dispute, but I'll.
Well, it's rather important to know whether there is such provision of what it says.
I mean, for present purposes, there's no doubt that the act of registration and point that Mr. Edwards emphasized is a very significant act for the landowner, perhaps that's the critical point. Can I, can I just make some points then about section fifteen? Now, I hesitate to ask the court to turn it up even, because the points I want to make about it are fairly obvious points, and they don't depend upon a close reading of the statute, but it's MS fifteen, tab one of the authorities, if it's useful to have it turned up. These, I want to make three points about it and then stand back and see where they leave us. The first of them is the least important, certainly to the statutory incompatibility point, although it does perhaps have some relevance to the points that Mr. Lawrence has been developing, but I'll give you all three. So the first point is that section fifteen embodies on its face Parliament's intention or Parliament's policy that the creation of new village greens by registration continues to serve a public purpose, and that it should be, continue to be possible. That's a very obvious point, I take that point, but on the other hand, it perhaps of some relevance to Mr. Lawrence's contentions about the court trying to limit the village green principles, because frankly, the starting point is that Parliament has expressed a clear intention. The second point.
Yes, and this comes after the Sunningwell case.
And this comes after some of the.
Parliamentary confirmation.
Exactly right. So it comes after the, it comes after the, some of the cases that Mr. Lawrence referred to, and indeed immediately after the Trapgrounds case, so this is still a bill at the time of the Trapgrounds case, so Parliament can be taken to know what it was doing, if I can put it in that simple way.
That's right, is it, this was before Parliament, at the time of the House of Lords.
Yes, I had, I don't have the detail, I had to look at this for the person of another case in the Court of Appeal, I don't remember the exact detail of the chronology, if the court would like to have it, we'll give it to you, but they were, they were taking place in parallel effectively. My lord, that's the first point. Second point is that section fifteen is mandatory in its terms. That is to say that where the conditions for registration in either subsections two, three, or four are met, the registration authority is required to register the land. So one of those conditions is that the application is made in time, and then the others are all about the public's use of the land for twenty years in the relevant way and so on. Third point, I appreciate completely obvious point, in my submission really important, is that there is no exception on the face of this pretty straightforward statutory provision, either for publicly held land or on the basis of a statutory incompatibility principle or anything of that kind. Now, I recognize, let me say immediately, I recognize, of course, that this court in New Haven recognized an exception, and I need to deal with that, and New Haven is my next stopping point, but it is quite an important starting point in my submission.
Well, section five one says it applies to all land in England and Wales.
Well, indeed, you can go further, indeed, indeed. So, so it's quite important by way of a starting point that when you consider the scope of the New Haven principle, you are reading in an implicit exception to what is on the face of its language, on the face of its clear effect, a completely straightforward statutory provision. And in my submission, that has quite a lot of importance, both generally and for a more specific reason that I'll come to, when this court has to consider whether you should adopt, as it were, a wide or a narrow reading of New Haven, because what I will seek to show you, and this in a sense goes to the question, there was some discussion about yesterday, about whether the New Haven case is an exercise in statutory construction, what I will seek to show you is that on the reading of New Haven that I invite the court to adopt, whilst it is, of course, recognizing exception to what is on the face of the Parliament statutory language, no exception, nevertheless, that, a relatively narrow exception to the principle does emerge by a process of clear logic, and one can see, if you like, the principle behind which, on which the Supreme Court in the earlier case was acting. Whereas if you adopt the wider reading, the reading for which my learned friend contends, I know. I know that my learning friend says, well, there's no principle distinction between this case and New Haven, I'll just show you why that's wrong. You adopt the wider reading, one is left asking the question, well, how did the court arrive at it, at this very wide exception to what is on the face of things, very clear parliamentary language?
Did you say New Haven was an exception?
Yes.
I wonder whether it is really. I mean, if you're right, and New Haven depends upon another special piece of legislation that must be construed as to exclude this, then it's not actually an exception as such, Mr Beale.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want to trouble too much about the label exception, my lord. I mean, on some sense of that label, it probably is an exception, I'm prepared to accept. But, I mean, let me just say now, at this stage, and I've set this out in paragraph ten of my written case, but let me say now what I say the New Haven principle is. It is that section fifteen of the two thousand and six Act will not apply so as to require registration of a village green, where that would create a direct conflict with the requirements of some other statutory regime. So as I shall seek to show you in just a moment, when I come to New Haven, what you get in the New Haven situation is one where, effectively, you're faced with a stark choice. Either you register, either you choose not to register the green, in which case you've departed from what section fifteen seemed to require, or you register the green, in which case you will have required the disapplication of some part of the other statutory regime, in this case the New Haven Port legislation seen as a whole. I'll seek to show you what that is. One can see then immediately why, in the face of a direct, effectively you've got two regimes of primary legislation, or grounded in primary legislation, which simply cannot both be applied at the same time and given their full effect. And so the issue of statutory construction that the court was faced within New Haven was a straight one of deciding which of those two statutory regimes should take precedence. That's, I shall seek to show you how New Haven works.
But how can you do that if you have two statutes? They must have equal force.
Well, I think, my lady, it's possible to contemplate, and in a moment I'll show you how this applies in New Haven. Statutory provision one says black is white, and statutory provision two says black is black. They're simply inconsistent. You have to choose, perhaps by the doctrine of implied repeal, for example, which one takes precedence.
Yes.
That's the sort of situation. It's not an implied repeal case, not quite, although it's very close to it. But that's the sort of situation where, which obtains in New Haven. And so the issue of statutory construction, I say, is which one prevails? What did Parliament intend when enacting the two thousand and six Act about its application to cases where there would be an inconsistency?
You're going to show why that doesn't...
I'll show that, that's the next exercise.
But you're also showing why that doesn't apply to the NHS property.
Indeed, indeed, yeah. I mean, obviously I've got to do that exercise, but that's the way, in my submission, that's the way to understand the New Haven case. So with that introduction, can I then take you straight to New Haven? It's tab twenty-one of the main authorities, volume one, the main authorities. And I'm going to take you back with some, with apologies to some passages that you looked at with my learning friend, but they're pretty, pretty important, and I put a slightly different, I put a very, well, quite different, actually, interpretation upon them than he did. So if I can take the court within tab twenty-one to MS six-three-three. We need to get our heads around two things, the basic factual position, it's very simple, but I just want to show you it, and then the legislative regime that applied to that factual situation. So let me take the facts first. The critical bits are paragraphs eight and nine, MS six-three-three, and over the page to six-three-four. There are two simple points that I want to draw out. The first is very simple, paragraph eight. The beach, and the court knows the beach is a bit of land that was up for registration in New Haven. The beach is part of the operational land of the harbour, which is currently owned and operated by MPP and is subject to statutory provisions and bylaws, and those are the ones mentioned previously, which I'm going to come to in a minute. So, I mean, my learning friend has made the submission yesterday that the beach, the statutory provisions, which we're going to look at in a moment, don't apply only to the beach. And so far as it goes, that's correct. But on the other hand, they do apply specifically to the beach in the sense that they attach, quite unlike the education legislation, which we're concerned with in the present case, they attach to specific parcels of land, and amongst those specific parcels of land is the beach. The effect of paragraph eight, and if we need, I'll draw the point out slightly more.
But isn't it also a functional point, that the sandbank buttresses the harbour wall?
Yes.
And therefore it's a necessary part of the breakwater?
My lady, yes. So that's the other point I want to make, really, which is paragraph nine, and you've looked at this, you're alive to it, but it's worth, it does bear some emphasis, which is that in paragraph nine, I won't read it out, we're told how the beach comes into existence, and it's a curiosity, you might think, in a case about village greens, that actually it didn't exist, it wouldn't have existed but for the harbour. But more specific, because what happens, as my lady says, sand accumulates alongside, along one side of the breakwater, and that's what...
I don't think there was any finding that it was necessary to have the sand there to buttress the wall.
Yes, I'm not sure about that. It's not, it's not relevant. I'm not sure it goes one way or another to my argument whether that was the case.
But it's another aspect of specificity. It's actually a functional test, as I see it.
But I just think that wasn't the case. The sand built up, and there was any suggestion that it was necessary to keep the wall...
I don't, can I put it, I'm not a hundred per cent sure, but can I say that I don't rely upon that sort of argument. In any event, so the sand builds up alongside the harbour, alongside the harbour wall and or breakwater. And so it forms on top of, or extends out, the foreshore. Now, that's going to be very important when we look at the statutory provisions, which is the next point that I want to come to. So now coming back to paragraphs two to seven of the judgment. There are a whole series of statutory provisions set out there. Can I, can I suggest that they can be, and it's not the only way of doing it, be broadly organised into four categories?
Sorry, I missed a reference.
I'm so sorry, my lady.
Which paragraph are you on?
So I'm going to, well, I'm talking at the moment about paragraph two to seven, but I'm going to be a bit more specific and come to paragraph three next.
Yes.
So the first category are duties, duties of maintenance and support of the harbour. And we've already seen that the beach is, for these purposes, part of the harbour. So albeit for the purposes of having an operating port, you have a duty to maintain and support this particular land that we're interested in as part and parcel of the harbour. And just to draw out, well, we're on section three, so I'm on section forty-nine of the eighteen forty-seven Act. Just to draw out the specificity that we're dealing with, which I think just reinforces the point. If you look at the second part of paragraph, section forty-nine set out at paragraph three, you'll see that there are references to specific locations, points on the River Ouse and so forth. It just reinforces the point that this is all about duties in relation to a specific area of land. One way of putting the point, and I put it like this in the case, is that New Haven, unlike a possible example contemplated by my Lord, Lord Carmouth, yesterday, New Haven Port, the public body, the entity, didn't just have a duty to operate a harbour, they had a duty to operate a harbour on this land, at New Haven, on this land. That's the first point. The second category, which probably does overlap with the first, are various powers to construct and maintain works. And so you see examples of that both in paragraph four and in paragraph seven, where it refers to article ten of the nineteen ninety-one Order. Third category, duties to keep the harbour open. Example of that, probably the most important, maybe the only one, end of paragraph five, section thirty-three of the Clauses Act eighteen forty-seven, as applied to New Haven by the eighteen seventy-eight Act. It's true that the Clauses Act is general legislation, but it's specifically applied to this land by other legislation. And the duty there is to keep the harbour, as a whole, open to all persons for the shipping and unshipping of goods and the embarking and landing of passengers. And the fourth is perhaps the most, I'm not sure if this is the right word, but almost dramatic set of powers, because the fourth set of powers, and this takes its significance from the way in which the beach forms, are powers to dredge the foreshore. And, indeed, well, so let's see that first. Paragraph five, in the middle of paragraph five now, section fifty-seven of the eighteen seventy-eight New Haven Act, it is provided, "The company may hire or purchase and use any dredging machines for the purposes of deepening and cleansing the harbour." And secondly, paragraph seven, now looking at article eleven, "The company may deepen, widen, dredge, scour, and improve the bed and foreshore of the transferred harbour." The transferred harbour is just, that's a reference to the harbour having been transferred to New Haven Port. "And may blast any rock within the transferred harbour or in such approaches." Now, if you just think about the way that the beach formed, that's really significant. Because what the New Haven Port is given express power to do is dredge, remove sand from the foreshore, and if necessary, blast rocks and all the rest of it. In other words, it's given express power to change the shape of the land. It may even be to the extent of removing the beach altogether, if it considers that that is necessary for the proper exercise of its functions. So if you just think, and this is...
Can I, I mean, it's very helpful to go through those powers, but at some point you're going to tell us which of those are critical to the principle, because you focused on the fact that here is a company required by statute to maintain a particular dock, which I can see as a very specific thing. I mean, in a sense, all these other things, including the power to dredge, are really incidental to that basic task. You know, I mean, it does spell out having to dredge, but if you're trying to maintain a harbour, then it's not surprising that you have an incidental power to dredge.
Well, on one, that's right. And when you first look at it, you think, oh, well, it's a power to dredge, never mind, that's not so interesting. But when you put it alongside paragraph nine, I do say it becomes rather more significant.
But I'm wondering whether, if it weren't there, whether the case would have been different.
So the court doesn't, I mean, we'll go to the passage in which they deal with this next, that's my next stop. But the court doesn't tell us, well, you know, the critical one was section fifty-nine of the eighteen forty-seven Act as opposed to the dredging power, or that it was the dredging power as opposed to the, it just takes them as a package. So it's a bit difficult for me to second guess, well, if you remove any one of these powers, what would the answer have been different? I mean, I would say, on the facts of this case, you'd have to remove quite a lot, or most of them, before the answer would have been different. And I respectfully submit that probably any one of them would have been sufficient, may have been sufficient to create the incompatibility, because, but there are a couple of key points. First of all, contrary to what Mr Edwards submitted, with respect, these are all powers and duties which relate to this specific land, and this specific land includes the beach. So if you register a green over the land, then you are to that extent interfering with the duties and powers which New Haven Port is given in relation to this specific land.
Is it critical that these powers are granted by primary legislation? Because...
Yes, it's a quite an interesting question.
Because, you know, one has a number of harbours which are created not by primary legislation, but by a provisional order under the General Act.
My lord, I have wondered about that myself, and I, I mean, I can see the argument that says, well, it's all, it's not this case, but it's all in secondary legislation, so it can't override, if it's section fifteen of the two thousand and six Act.
It's quite an important point you're bringing up, statutory incompatibility.
I think you'd have to look at, not only the secondary, the detail of the secondary legislation, but also the nature of the enabling power. So for example, if the enabling power relates specifically to, it's not this case, but New Haven Port for the sake of argument, and then the detail of all these powers and duties are set out in secondary legislation, but plainly within the express contemplation of Parliament in setting the enabling power, then I would suggest that the incompatibility might arise in the same way. If, on the other hand, the enabling power was very general, not about New Haven Port, so you only get the tie to the land via the secondary legislation, maybe the answer would be different. I mean, it's not this, it's not New Haven, and it's not the present case, so I don't want to...
It gets a pretty woolly distinction.
Well, can we, can we go, my lords and my ladies, to then, what I say is a critical passage in the judgment, which has so far not been looked at, because what I suggested to you so far is you can see how the incompatibility arises in a rather direct way. But that's also what the court says, it's MS six-five-seven, it's paragraphs ninety-four and ninety-five. And can I, well, can I first of all just invite the court to read those passages?
Certainly.
Ninety-four and ninety-five, MS six-five-seven.
We've done that.
Grateful. So my lords and my ladies, what I say you have there is the court explaining why on the facts of this, well, the facts and legal context of this case, an incompatibility arose, and it's not just, well, there's a general holding power, there's a general, there's a general holding power of the kind we have here, you know, the land is held for some particular purpose for the time being. It's much more specific than that.
Yes, I mean, I can see that, but surely one's got to look at paragraph ninety-three to see the tests they were applying.
I completely accept that, completely accept that. But I, I mean, paragraph ninety-three is the critical paragraph, and it's...
I mean, you're right, on the facts of the case, they pointed to these very specific things.
It will be my next stop. But it is important in my submission to see the context in which the ruling in paragraph ninety-three is made. And, you know, without labouring it, I hope it's clear enough, I mean, just to go back to the dredging power, you've got, on the one hand, express powers to dredge, which really mean to destroy the beach altogether under the New Haven Port legislation, that's why I say this is a rather dramatic illustration of the incompatibility. You've got, on the other hand, once the land is registered as a green, a criminal offence if you damage the green, and those two just can't, they just cannot sit together. And so what that factual and legal matrix presented the court with was a requirement to undertake an exercise of statutory construction. And so in response to, as I say, I think a question my lady, Lady Arden, raised yesterday, the question, the question of statutory incompatibility in this case was a question about which of those two regimes will take precedence. And it's a question which the court in New Haven, or in any similar case, has no choice but to engage in. And that's, and that's important in my submission, when we go back to ninety-three, because of the way that the court emphasises, that the issue was one of statutory construction.
Yes, so you're really saying, is there an implied qualification in the...
I mean, as the court knows, I'm getting to the end of, just make the point, and I'll come back to it, but as the court knows, at the end of paragraph ninety-three, the court takes assistance from, it doesn't say it applies directly, but takes assistance from the approach that is to be taken to cases of implied repeal.
Yes, but it doesn't have to be implied repeal.
It's not quite implied repeal, but it's, one can see on the facts of this case, against the background I've set out, why that analogy with implied repeal is pretty, pretty exact, because you have to decide which of the two, by enacting one piece of legislation, was Parliament impliedly intending to override the earlier legislation. That's the question which the court saw. And so that is my answer. When the court says at the beginning of paragraph ninety-three, the question of incompatibility is one of statutory construction, it's that quite sharp issue of statutory construction which, in my submission, the court saw itself as engaged upon. So if we now go to paragraph ninety-three, or perhaps I just have effectively... So if we now go to paragraph ninety-three, or perhaps I just have effectively, obviously this is, I agree with Mr. Edwards, this is the important paragraph. So, the question of incompatibility is one of statutory construction. It does not depend on the legal, it does not depend on the legal theory that underpins the rules of acquisitive prescription. That's a point I'll come back to, the court saw some analogy, and we'll come back to that part. And then this important question, the question is, does section fifteen of the two thousand and six Act apply to land which has been acquired by a statutory undertaker, whether by voluntary agreement or by powers of compulsory purchase? And can I just pick up, while we're looking at that, at the point raised by my Lord, Lord Sale? So they see this as a principle as applying regardless of whether it's voluntary or compulsory, and which is held for statutory purposes that are inconsistent with its registration as a town or village green. Now, my learned friend would have you read that, give me, I'll just find my, as I understand it, as, does section fifteen of the two thousand and six Act, just for the purposes of expedition, skip over some of the word, apply to land which is held for statutory purposes and where the use for those statutory purposes would be inconsistent with registration? And that's the principle that he, and he, and they answered the answer to the question, it doesn't apply. So the principle he would say, he would say that you get from that is that statutory incompatibility would arise where land is held for statutory purposes and where the use for those purposes would be inconsistent with it being registered as a village green. That's not what it says. What it says is, focusing on the last part of the sentence, does section fifteen apply, et cetera, to land which is held for statutory purposes that are inconsistent with its registration as a town or village green?
But what would happen if the New Haven Port was in a period of disuse?
On the scheme that we've, that is described in paragraphs two to seven, and then the factual position eight to nine, I don't think it would make any difference.
So that if it was, a situation where it had fallen into disuse, it would still not be capable of registration as a-
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't want to be too definitive about this, but I'm inclined to say you'd still get an incompatibility, which is in one level a point against me, because I can see that, but let me base up to it. What matters is that you've got a set of statutory purposes upon which the land is held, so maintain the port on this land, power to dredge functions, power to dredge and so on, which are simply inconsistent, Parliament, I mean, notwithstanding the fact that no one's doing it for the time being, on my lady's example, you've got a set of statutory purposes which Parliament does require to be carried out, and which are inconsistent with registration in the sense that's described in paragraph nineteen forty-five.
So as long as a New Haven legislation is on the statute book, there's can be incompatibility, even if there is temporary disus or even permanent?
I mean, I'm, I'm a bit hesitant about permanent, it depends what permanent means. I mean, I don't know if the land, I mean, I don't know how you'd have permanent, because if they're still on the statute book, someone's supposed to be doing it.
I mean, that didn't arise on the facts of the case.
But certainly, I mean, I'm certainly happy to accept temporary, it's a temporary-
If you can look at it, disregard temporary use, you are therefore positively looking at the possibility of future use.
My lady, my case, my argument, isn't founded upon, the basis upon which I distinguish New Haven, isn't founded upon principally at any rate whether the use is currently taking place. It's founded upon the exercise of statutory construction. You effectively compare the two statutory regimes. The statutory regime of the two thousand and six Act, which tells you you've got to register land in certain circumstances, and the statutory regime of here, the New Haven legislation, which tells you you've got to do certain other things, and the two just can't be reconciled.
Aye.
Whereas, I'm so sorry, can I just finish the, whereas, and I'll come to this in a minute, when we look at the education legislation, you don't see anything remotely comparable to that, because all you've got is a general duty which doesn't attach to the land, to have enough schools in the area, and so on, I mean, that's a slight simplification.
But if you take the NHS property-
My lord, yes.
Section two-two-three-one.
Yes, I should say I focused on the legislation relevant to the Lancashire case, but I'll-
No, I know, but I mean, we've got to deal with both.
No, 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 of course, yeah.
Provide, the NHS role is holding this land for the purpose of providing facilities to bodies exercising functions under the NHS Act. Now, that is the purpose which is holding that land, and I would have thought it's pretty obvious that that's incompatible with that land being used for general recreation under the Commons Act. So why doesn't that come within the wording of the-
Can I just come back to the, can I come back to the point I was making, but I hadn't quite finished on the wording, and then I'll try and answer my lord's question if that's acceptable. So I just want to focus back on that, that, that critical, probably critical sentence. So, as I say, what Mr. Edwards would invite you to read that is saying is, you compare the uses for which the land is held for any statutory purpose, so here for education, and you ask whether that is compatible with registration as a village green, which is essentially how my lord puts it to me in relation to NHS a minute ago. The point I'm seeking to make, completely consistently with the building blocks which I've taken us through to get to paragraph ninety-three, is that that's not what that actually says. What it says is, it talks about land which, which is held for statutory purposes that are inconsistent with its registration. So the question is not, are the uses for which the, which would be associated with statutory purpose incompatible with registration as a green? Whether the statutory purposes themselves are inconsistent-
I don't understand why that makes a difference.
Well, let me just try and-
In the case of the NHS property case, the purposes for which it's being held are for facilities for the health service.
So, so let me just-
And that's incompatible with using it for recreation.
My lord, that's the, that's the, that's the question I'm trying.
I see, sorry.
No, 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 I mean, because it's a-
Sorry, shut up.
No, my lord, it's, I mean, it's a key point, so, you know, we, the point is that in the New Haven case, the statutory purposes, as we have seen, were not general statutory purposes to achieve a port somewhere, they were specific statutory purposes to have a port on this land.
But that's not what they're talking about. I can see they could have drafted this paragraph much more narrowly. I mean, one of my problems with this was that it is drafted rather broad terms, because it's not concentrating on the particular facts in the New Haven case where you have a statute which actually deals with a particular pot of land, it's dealing much more generally with land held for statutory purposes.
My lord, the submission I'm making to you is actually, it's rather more precise than, can I just, I'm sorry, I don't want to labour the point, but I know it's quite important. So, so the statutory, it's not just, in New Haven, you have a statutory purpose which is to hold the land, to hold this land as a port, as part of a port. And that statutory purpose is inconsistent with the registration of that, with its registration, i.e. the land's registration, as a town or village green. Whereas, I'm getting ahead of myself because we haven't gone to the education legislation, but we all know what it says. If you think about the education legislation, the only statutory, the statutory purposes there are nothing to do with land, they don't attach to the land, the statutory purpose under the Education Act is simply to, and I oversimplify a bit, but we'll get to the detail, but it's simply to have enough schools in your area. That statutory, and it's not a statutory purpose that requires you to use land that you happen to hold in a land bank for the time being for that purpose. The only statutory purpose, the only requirement of the statute is to hold, is to achieve sufficient schools, which you may achieve by developing the land you hold for the education purposes, which you may achieve, as Mr. Lawrence postulates in a slightly different context, by selling the land and using the proceeds to build a school somewhere else, and so on.
It seems as if there's an element of it being necessary to use.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's held for a statutory purpose which necessarily makes it inconsistent with a village green.
Or which requires the use of the land.
That's what your argument is.
That's the point. The statutory, if the statutory purpose requires the use of the land in a particular way, then the registration of that land as a village green will be inconsistent with that statutory purpose.
But it really depends on how closely in you focus on the statutory purpose, because you can say it's necessarily incompatible with it if it's, take the NHS, only purpose of holding it is to provide those facilities.
Sure, but, but the NH, can I come back to Lancashire?
I'm sorry to keep going about NHS, but it's a clearer case, possibly.
Yeah, yeah.
I can see that authorities before they acquire land may have a choice of purchasing land in all sorts of places, not necessarily these particular sites.
Certainly.
But once they've acquired the lands in these particular sites, and in the NHS case, it has to be held for particular statutory purposes.
They've only got one statutory purpose as well.
Yes, and in the local authority case, they appropriate it to a particular purpose, which means that it's dedicated to that purpose.
For the time being.
For the time being, subject to rededicating it to other things. Haven't you then, at that point, reached the stage where those parcels of land are being held for specific statutory purposes, and they are incompatible with the Commons Act?
Yes, I understand, my lord, I accept, so I accept that, I mean, subject obviously to my ground two in, to the issue two in my case, but I accept that, in Lancashire, let's assume for the sake of argument, that they're holding it for a statutory purpose, for their educational purposes. And in the NHS case, so far as I understand it, they've only got one statutory purpose, and they're holding it inevitably for that purpose. So I'm not, I'm not disputing that they're holding the land for the statutory purpose, but the point I make is that the statutory purpose doesn't relate, effectively they're holding it as a resource for the better achievement of that statutory purpose. The statutory purpose itself, and I'll come to, I'll come back to this when we look at the education provisions, I'll take them briefly, but I want to go to them. The statutory purpose itself doesn't relate to, doesn't relate to the use of the land. So you just hold the, so the statutory purpose is entirely general, it says nothing about the use of land at all.
Until you acquire land, and then-
Well, no, because the statutory provisions that are relied upon say nothing about, I mean, I want to come to them, but I'd rather, perhaps I can come back to them in a moment. But in any event, the submission, well, the submission here is that, when it talks about holding the land for statutory purposes that are inconsistent with its registration, what is required, effectively, and this is why it's an issue of statutory construction, what is required is a comparison of the two legislative regimes to decide which should take precedence.
But you have to determine the answer to the question at the date of proposed registration. So you have to look surely at whether it is then held for statutory purposes.
My lady, on the facts of, as I understand both of these, I mean, I can see there's, obviously I say the statutory incompatibility principle doesn't apply here, so that's, that's that. If I'm wrong about that, I can see a question could arise on a particular set of acts about, well, when do you apply it? Do you apply it at the date of registration, Mr. Edwards touched on it, do you apply it at the date of registration, do you apply it throughout the twenty years of use, do you apply it at the date of the application, so forth, as to which there's no obvious answer. It didn't arise in New Haven. If I'm wrong on the basic approach to statutory incompatibility, it won't arise on the facts of this case, because if they, if they did appropriate the land, and if they did are holding it for statutory purposes, they did so for a long time ago, so you don't need to resolve that issue. So there's a, there's a possibly important question for another day.
Why for another day? It says, and which is held. So suppose Parliament had inserted a condition as to, which would enable you, as a condition to determine, which was the basis on which it would be held for a statutory purpose. You would have to inquire whether that condition was satisfied at the date of registration. If the population exceeded a hundred thousand pounds, the school grounds are to be increased.
Yes.
You have to look at the surrounding factors.
Can I, I mean, I don't want to keep poring over this one sentence, but can I just then look at the rest of the paragraph? So this view of what is being said in my submission does follow from, I've already made the point, that makes sense of why the court saw it as an issue of statutory construction, but it'd also make sense of what the court says at the end of the paragraph about applying the rule that a general provision does not derogate from a special one, and the implied repeal issue. Because whilst, on the facts of New Haven, as I say, it's not quite an implied repeal, but it's pretty close to it, the court is dealing with a situation where you just have to decide which of the two statutory regimes takes precedence. And so that's why they're able to, to draw on the principle that assistance may be obtained from the rule that a general provision does not derogate from a special one, in answering that question. And the conclusion they reach is, well, you've got the very specific New Haven Port legislation, and you've got the much more general, you've got the much more general village green legislation. But that, I mean, there are two points to make about this. First of all, when we get to it, there's no sense in which the education legislation can be said to be special. So applying that principle to our case, it's not going to help Mr. Edwards' case, if I put it like that. But secondly, the drawing on that principle here only makes sense in my submission in a context where the court is faced with the kind of problem which I'm saying was critical to its judgment, i.e. which of the two regimes takes precedence. Because you do have, for the reasons I've developed, paragraphs ninety-four and ninety-five, you do have a literal clash between the two statutory regimes, New Haven on the one hand, and-
You've made that point.
I've made that point.
You've made that point pretty clear.
Yes.
And if these appeals are to succeed on statutory incompatibility, there will be a widening of the statutory incompatibility principle beyond that in New Haven.
That's right.
In relation to which, we will need to consider policy questions.
Yes, my lord, yes, but for present purposes, the only, the point I'm seeking to make is, I mean, I'm not sure this case is properly, I mean, on one level it's about whether we widen or narrow, but you're not being asked to develop the principle, you're being asked to decide, I think, what the principle is, effectively. Was, was the court in New Haven laying down the-
Okay, application of the principle to facts beyond those in New Haven.
Indeed. So, my lord, the only reason I make that point is, therefore, the point I'm seeking to make about the end of this paragraph is the, the fact that the court drew on the, I won't try the Latin, general doesn't derogate from specific, does help to understand what principle the court thought it was deciding. Because that only makes sense in my submission if the principle that the court was deciding upon was the narrow one. It doesn't make, if the court was laying down the very general proposition that wherever land is held for a particular statutory purpose, then it will become, there will be a statutory incompatibility if the purpose can't be carried out whilst it's registered as a village green. Then it just doesn't make, then it doesn't make sense to draw on this principle here. My lords, my ladies, that's what I wanted to say about those parts of the judgment. Can I-
I mean, we haven't looked at the argument.
No.
I was quite interested to see how the case was being put at page six-two-four.
Yes.
Which was in sort of policy terms. I mean, it's quite interesting to see the sort of cases that were being referred to.
Yes.
And the sort of comparison of the English and Scottish law.
Well, my lord, I mean, I wondered about taking you to the argument.
I don't think you'd spend on it, but-
No, no, well, just very briefly, if we go to six-two-four, as my lord says, can I just draw attention to one passage? So this is the argument of Mr. George, Queen's Counsel, for New Haven Port. Six-two-four, MS six-two-four, that is, one-five-five, one-five-five-five of the report. And I'm just picking it up at the top of this page, six-two-four. I won't, "The effect of the registration will be to confer rights on local people to use the land, and the use will be protected by criminal sanctions. That may interfere with the ability of the port to defer authority to develop the port. The port authorities' powers were conferred in the public interest, so that, as in any analogous situations of the creations of public highways and the creation of divisions. Parliament cannot have intended that the registration regime for town and village greens could potentially negative the powers under which the undertakers hold the land." So that's the argument which was made, and that's the argument which I'm saying the court accepted. court accepted. Not Parliament cannot have intended to interfere, to create a general inconvenience for any public authority that holds land for a specific purpose, but that Parliament cannot have intended to negative the powers which relate to the land.
Well, Parliament gave the local authorities the authority to decide which piece of land would be held for an educational purpose.
I'll come to, I want to, while we're on it, I just want to finish the exercise in relation to New Haven. I appreciate, I plainly have to come when I dealt with New Haven to the education part.
Before we move away from you, my lord...
Well, actually, there's another point on New Haven, but please, just not to stop, my lord, forgive me.
Well, I just wanted to ask you about paragraph 93, the opening part.
Yes, can I just turn it, let me just turn it back up.
Yes, of course, it's page 656.
I've got it.
It did seem to me that the court there was perhaps deliberately framing the proposition quite widely, not with specific reference to the New Haven facts, if you like. Because they talk about two things happening. First of all, land has been acquired by a statutory undertaker, and that's whether by voluntary agreement or by powers of compulsory purchase. And in fact, we, it doesn't appear from the report quite how the New Haven trustees actually did have...
No, I noticed, yes, I double checked that.
Because it goes back to the 16th century.
We don't know whether it was voluntary or...
And so in effect, it's taken as given. I mean, there wouldn't have been, who knows?
It's a curiosity, certainly, yeah.
So in relation to how it comes about that the statutory undertaker acquires the land, the court seems to be saying, seeking to cover all bases, voluntary acquisition, compulsory purchase, those are the two methods. And then they look at something else, which is, that land is held for statutory purposes.
Yes.
And if one does read it in that way, why can't it be said that in this case, both the statutory undertakers in their different ways have acquired the land in different ways?
Whether voluntary or...
And having acquired it, statutory purposes then become attached to that land, so as to fall within the principle as stated here.
The difference is, in my submission, that statutory purposes, or just call it the, there's a slight tension about how one thinks about the phrase statutory purposes, which is quite a general one, actually. Quite, because, I mean, when you go on to 94 to 95, it's not so much about statutory purposes, it's about the rather specific direct clash, so one function, dredging, can't be carried out because it would damage the green, or there's a specific duty to hold the land.
Right, but I thought you'd accepted that if one's looking at the specific purposes which attach, say, to the NHS land, that if you get to that level of analysis, there is an incompatibility.
So the distinction, so the critical distinction, as I put it, is, Mr Edwards says, you compare the use to which the land would be put for the statutory purposes for which it is held, and the, and what would happen if a village green is registered, and you ask whether the two are incompatible. That's how, as I understand, Mr Edwards puts the case. What I say is that that misses out a critical element. Because if there is no duty to continue holding the land for those statutory purposes, you're perfectly in liberty to sell it, appropriate it for another purpose, and so on, then you're missing a critical element. Because in those circumstances, so in other words, all, the statutory purposes don't relate to the land. In other words, and this is why I say you focus on the word statutory purpose, the phrase, sorry, statutory purposes, you have to look at the statutory purposes themselves. In the Education Acts, the statutory purpose is to have enough schools. Obviously, you're going to need to hold land in order to have enough schools, or you're going to need to ensure that land is available for building on at any rate. But the statutory purpose isn't about the land at all. And so the statutory purpose won't conflict with the registration of the land as a town or village green, because the statutory purpose is nothing to do with the land.
Well, it is when it's concretized into action.
My lady, I don't accept that. I mean, in other ways, thinking about it, I've made the point that it's, the local authority, or the NHS for that matter, hold the land as a resource for the achievement of their statutory purposes. So do they have financial resources for the achievement of their statutory purposes? It's just a resource analogous to...
Suppose that a village green was registered in relation to every bit of, well, let's take the NHS example, every bit of land that they held, which is the logical extension...
Yeah, I mean, in theory, the logic of my argument is you could, you know, if the public used all of that...
So then they've got nil, and nothing on which their statutory purposes bite, and nothing to sell to buy new. Hasn't it conflicted with the statutory purpose?
Well, I mean, I can see the logic of that, but it is a rather extreme example. And in my, I mean, on the rather more likely scenario, which is that you hold one bit...
Is there an answer to it on the extreme example?
My lady, yes, the logical answer to it is the same one that I give on the narrow, on the less extreme example. So the logical answer to it, yes, it will make it, I mean, there are all sorts of things could happen to make it impossible for an authority to perform its statutory purposes. It could go bust, for example. No doubt Parliament would have to step in at that stage and put it in special measures or something like that. But if it goes bust, then, subject to some outside assistance, it's not going to be able to achieve its statutory purposes. So the example that my lady contemplates is not ultimately different from that.
It is, because we're looking for a clash between the two pieces of legislation.
Sure.
And if that happens, you've got it.
Yes, but my lady, so the key point is, if I can, I know it's maybe opportunistic, but picking up on the phrase my lady uses, you are looking for a clash between the two pieces of legislation. And you just, in New Haven, you have a direct clash between the two pieces of legislation. Oh, you pick up one bit of legislation, the village green legislation, you pick up the other bit of legislation, the New Haven legislation taken as a whole, and you can see that they just cannot sit together. You have to decide between. That's why at the beginning of paragraph 96, the court says, not necessary to lead evidence and so forth. Whereas if you pick up the Education Acts, and I know I keep saying I'll go to them, but if you pick up the Education Acts and you pick up the New Haven port legislation, there's no inconsistency between those two statutory regimes. There's no question of priority. Of course it would be, of course it's going to be inconvenient to a public body that holds land for a statutory purpose if that land gets registered as a village green. Of course it would.
Mr Beale, you've referred to 96, which we haven't spent much time on.
Yes.
In this case, which concerns a working harbour, it's not necessary to lead evidences to plans for the future. What are the cases in which they envisage plans for the future would come into it?
Well, the best example I can give of that, my lord, is a case that I will, if time permits, but I'm going to be a little bit cautious about it, go to, which is the BTC and Westmoreland case. And in the BTC and Westmoreland case, what happens is that you've got a statutory undertaker, it's running a railway, and the claim which is made is for a public right of way on a bridge which crosses, a footbridge crossing the railway. And there's already a private easement over that bridge, so that's why it's there and it's used by landowners on either side of the railway. And the issue, and so, and I should say, and I know that Mr Edwards relied on that case, but if I have time permits, I'll show you this. It is a case where the land itself is held for a statutory purpose, analogously to New Haven. In other words, it's not a case where they just happen to hold the land, but they've got no statutory duties in relation to the land. They've got, they cannot alien, for obvious reasons, they've got a railway line which is built out and operational. They can't just get rid of that bit and put the railway somewhere else. They've got to have a railway in this place. And what the Supreme, oh, sorry, House of Lords says, it's 1958, I think, the case, what the House of Lords says is, in principle, the statutory incompatibility argument runs, because in principle, this is a case of a statutory undertaker, after all, it's holding this specific land for these, for very specific purposes, in principle the argument runs. But on the particular facts of this case, having regard to the fact there's already a footbridge, that letting the public use the footbridge has no implications for the trains which pass underneath, there's no actual problem. Now, Mr Lawrence touched on a case, which was the Rambler's case, which was decided by Mr Justice Dove a few years ago, where a very similar situation, and we'll get copies of it if it assists the court, where a very similar situation arises, with the critical difference that it's not over a bridge, it's over a level crossing, a private level crossing. And Network, I acted in that case for the Secretary of State, but Network Rail before the inspector had led evidence that having, giving the public, letting the public have an unrestricted right of passage over the level crossing would create major safety problems, create problems for the running of the railway and so forth. On the facts, the inspector accepted that argument, because he accepted the safety case that was being advanced by Network Rail, and Mr Justice Dove upheld that decision. So that's the sort of scenario, but it doesn't go to, in which, because the nature of the interference, and it's probably going to be easier in relation to a footpath to get round incompatibility than for a village green, that's the sort of case where, in order to decide whether there's a genuine incompatibility, you do have to look at the particular facts. But, and this respect is critical, it's still in the context of what I would call a New Haven situation. In other words, and it's not a village green case, so by definition, New Haven doesn't apply directly, it's the analogous rights of way
I mean, the puzzle about 96, if there is a puzzle about it, is that in this case, there's no need for evidence in order to ascertain whether there is an incompatibility between the registration of the beach as a town or village green and, wait for it, Mr Beale, the use of the harbour. So use comes in...
Yes, well, I mean, I see that there they use, but I mean, I see that there they use that phrase, that's perfectly true. My answer is that, I mean, they're talking generally about, I mean, they're not laying down the principle in paragraph 96, they're laying down the principles in 93, I say. And it's the use of the harbour for the statutory purposes to which we have referred, which bring, I would say, brings you back to 94 and 95. And those are the statutory purposes which require you to use. So, I mean, it doesn't ultimately, I don't accept that that can be said to significantly dent my argument. My lords, conscious of time, can I come back to the second element of what I want to say about New Haven? Most of my submissions are on New Haven. So in, and then I'll just try to draw the threads together on New Haven. So in New Haven, the argument was made that the statutory incompatibility principle in relation to village greens could be inferred from the same principle as it applied in relation to private and public rights of way, so easements, public rights of way and so forth. And the court was careful to say, well, you can't just pick up the case law relating to those, that kind of statutory incompatibility, and apply it directly into village greens because we've got a new statutory regime. But they do accept that, at least by analogy, it may be that some support for the statutory incompatibility principle could be derived from those. And one can see that, for example, you needn't turn it up, but perhaps I'll just tell, it's a very short thing, in paragraph 77, MS 650, reference to case law on public rights of way, easements and servitude is only by way of analogy, is what they say about it. But having given the health warning, it's only useful by way of analogy, they go on to look at it, and one can see from 91, which I'll come to in a moment, that they plainly drew some assistance from it. So the way it works in New Haven is that, albeit by analogy and not treating it as conclusive, the court saw support for the existence of the statutory incompatibility principle, from the fact that a similar principle existed in relation to private easements, rights of way and so forth. And I would submit that if that's right, and it is right, because that's what the court said, then the same goes for thinking about what the limits of the principle should be. And with that basic thought, can I just take you briefly through the way the court approached this issue, and I think I'll go to one authority if time permits. So the court then distinguishes its paragraphs between the law in England and the law in Scotland. Paragraphs 78 to 80 deal with the law in England, paragraphs 81 to 90 deal with the law in Scotland. In relation to England, the settled principle was that there is a statutory incompatibility principle, but it derives from a wider capacity principle. That's paragraph 78, I won't read it out, but that's effectively another. In other words, the reason why you can't dedicate land if that will be inconsistent with your statutory duties is because, sorry, sorry, the reason a right can't arise from prescription, if that will be inconsistent with the statutory duties, is simply because a right can't arise by prescription if the landowner has no capacity to dedicate. So statutory incompatibility is a particular subset of, simply a subset of that. And the court then makes the point that in paragraph 80, that's unlike the village green situation, because there's certainly no private law capacity, objection to dedication. Sorry, because in relation to village greens. So the court says the position in relation to England is, the analogy is further weakened, as it were. But having said that, the court did nevertheless derive the proposition that if it will be inconsistent with the, that you get support, some support from this case law. But in England, and this is the BTC and Westmoreland case, in England, the mere fact that a public authority, be it a local authority, holds land for general education purposes, for example, or any other general purposes, is no obstacle to the creation of public rights, public or private rights of way. What you need for that to arise is that there is something in relation to statutory, in a statutory incompatibility case, something specific about the way in which the public body holds the land, which prevents its alienation. And we can see that from BTC and Westmoreland. Perhaps I should just, I think I will just take you there if I may. It's tab 51, MS 1032, volume two, back of volume two.
So sorry, can you give us the MS number again?
Yes, so it starts at MS 1032. And for reasons of time, can I just take you straight to the passage which I think shows the point I want to make? It's MS 1048, from the judgment of Viscount Simmons. So this is the case, I've described the facts of this case already. If we go to MS 1048, there's a passage beginning, any examination of this question must begin with the case of Leake, which has been cited in many cases. The decision goes to the root of the matter, and often, as has been cited, I think I should remind your lordships of the words of Mr Justice Park in that case, if he said the land were vested by the Act of Parliament in commissioners, so that they were therefore, thereby bound to use it for a special purpose, incompatible with its public use as a highway, I should have thought that such strategies would have been incapable in point of law to make a dedication of it. But if such use by the public would be not incompatible with the objects prescribed by the Act, then I think it's clear that the commissioners have that power. So the special element which you require to set up an incompatibility in England in relation to rights of way law, and the same would be true for private easements, is not merely that they hold it for a particular purpose. merely that they hold it for a particular purpose, but that they're bound to use it for that purpose. That's the additional, that's in the middle of the paragraph, my Lord. There's no side lettering on these old reports, but bound to use it for a special purpose. Now, that will be true, that was true in New Haven, of course, it was true here because you've got a railway undertaker who's got land and is required to operate a railway along the line of the railway. But it's not true for land held by a public authority simply pursuant to some general statutory purpose, for example, achieving housing or whatever it may be. And were it otherwise, the law would be that local authority land would be immune not only from registration as a village green, but also from registration as a highway, and that's definitely not the law, local authority land is riddled with public rights of way. So, that's the position in England. So, the point I make is, if you accept the point that it's legitimate to draw on the case law, on this older case law, not only to establish the existence of the principle, but also to see what its limits are, this gives us, in relation to England, strong support for a much more limited principle, which is pretty much the one that I'm inviting you to adopt. Then in relation to Scotland, if I just go back now to New Haven again, the court deals with this, paragraphs eighty-one to ninety. So, a couple of building blocks here, which we don't need to go to the authorities' floor, but first of all, it's paragraph eighty-two of the judgment in New Haven, where they discuss the important Scottish case of Mann and Brody, it goes over the page. In Scotland, unlike in England, there's no general private capacity principle, i.e. if the public used the right of way for the relevant period of time, which certainly used to be forty years, then the fact that the landowner had no private capacity to dedicate it to public use in part or all of that period, doesn't stop the establishment of a public right of way. So, point one, no, unlike, unlike England, no private law capacity bar. And of course, that means that the analogy between village greens and Scottish law is that much stronger than it is with the law of England. That's the first point. The second point to make very shortly, if you go please to six five four, MS six five four, is that there's reference there to a case called Air Harbour Trustees in Oswald. We've got it in the bundle, but I'm certainly not going to show it to you because the principle is established in the first line of the judgment. A line of authority which included the Air Harbour Trustees case, that a statutory body had no power to alienate lands which it acquired for a statutory purpose or to grant any right over such land which was inconsistent with its use of statutory purposes. So, we're dealing here with public bodies which haven't got the power to alienate the land. And that's the context, those two building blocks, so then the context for the two cases which the court looks at, which establish that, notwithstanding that the, notwithstanding that there's no private capacity principle, there is a statutory incompatibility principle in the law of Scotland. Now, the two cases, I'll take them in the reverse order because I can take one of them entirely from the judgment, are Ellis's Trustees, which is discussed at paragraph eighty-five. And Ellis's Trustees, let me just make sure I've got this right around, is the case about private rights of way, I don't think terribly much matters. And there's a claim for a private right of way established by use, I won't go through all of paragraph eighty-five, and it fails for a whole series of reasons, not only statutory incompatibility, but including statutory incompatibility. And the court deals with the statutory incompatibility point in the bit that's set out in paragraph eighty-five. And, I mean, I'd like the court at some point to read both passages that are set out, but perhaps for the purposes of, perhaps I should just ask the court to read those two passages.
At eighty-six.
So, my lady, paragraph eighty-five, the two passages from Ellis's Trustees that are set out.
Yes, we'll do that now.
Yes, I'm grateful. Let us d through to the end of F.
We've done that.
Grateful. So, you see in the first passage that the point being made that they don't have the power to alienate the land. And then, so in other words, they couldn't grant the right voluntarily. And then the conclusion in the next bit, if it will be ultra-varyous for them to make such an express grant.
Well, sorry, it's not just alienate the land, it's alienate the land or agree they should be subjected to any uses that might be inconsistent with the use of the bank.
Yes, yes, yes. So, they can't do, completely accept that. So, they can't, they can't, but in a sense, you get, you get the point, the point is made shortly in the next bit. So, if it will be ultra-varyous of them to make an express grant, in this case of a right of way, an effective grant could not be inferred from any such user by the pursuers and their authors from toleration. So, the principle is, the statutory incompatibility principle that's being set out there is, if you can't do it expressly because there's a restriction on your dealing with the land, whether by granting a right or alienation or whatever it may be, then it won't arise, then the statutory incompatibility principle will stop it from arising by prescription. Same point in relation to public rights of way in relation, in the case that's discussed at paragraph eighty-three of the judgment. And this is the Magistrates of Edinburgh case. And I think I'd just like to turn that case up if the court allow me to do so.
Of course.
It's tab twelve in the same, this main authorities' bundle, so it may be useful to keep a hand on. And, I mean, I'm not going to go through the facts for reasons of time, but it's the same point, you've got a claim now for a public right of way. And I think this is a railway case, yes, that's right, this is another railway case. You've got a claim for a public right of way here over a railway line, that claim fails for a number of different reasons, but again, one of them is statutory incompatibility. And the passage which the court sets out in New Haven begins on page, on MS two five Reason, I mean, I asked the court to read what's quoted in New Haven itself, but the reason I asked the court just to turn it up is that actually the point is particularly expressed in the bit which immediately follows the bit that's quoted in New Haven. So, if the court goes over to MS two five six, and about a quarter of the way down, there's a sentence which begins, "A landowner",
Mm-hmm.
about ten lines down, does the court have that?
Yes.
"A landowner who has no power to grant has no power to acquiesce, and persons who may find inconvenient to traverse a ground which has been set aside by act of Parliament, i.e. the land itself has been set aside by act of Parliament for specific statutory purposes, cannot be presumed to be thereby asserting a right to override the statute." So, I seek to draw all of that together in my written case at paragraphs thirty-nine and forty, MS two two oh four, in relation to Scotland, but specifically here. Paragraph thirty-nine, "So, in Scotland, mere private law in capacity does not bar the acquisition of prescriptive rights. That's why the court thought the analogy with Scotland was better than the analogy with England. But, two, a statutory bar to voluntary granting the rights in question by reason of the statutory purposes for which the land is held will do so." So, you've got a statutory incompatibility principle in Scotland, but, and this is a critical bit for my purposes, then the limits of that principle are, as I set out in paragraph forty, and perhaps I just asked the court to read paragraph forty down to the sentence which ends on that page. So, you needn't read for the present, maybe just read the whole of paragraph forty, actually, it's only one extra sentence.
Down to acquiescence.
But please just read the whole of paragraph forty.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so the point I make, which I thought was reasonably happy the way I'd set it out there, is that in Scotland, certainly in Scotland, and this is for reasons I've already given this is true in England, but in Scotland, yes, there's a statutory incompatibility principle, but it's a narrow principle which applies where the detail of the statutory regime which governs the land would make it ultra-varyous to grant the right expressly, not the very wide principle that wherever a whole, a public body holds land for any public purpose, that in itself will prevent the acquisition of rights by prescription. As I said, that's true in England and Scotland. So, the point, if I then stand back from all of that detail, the point I seek to draw from it is that just as the court in New Haven drew assistance from the analogous statutory incompatibility principle in relation to public rights of way, so should this court draw assistance from making exactly the same analogy and seeing what the limits of that principle would be.
I think when I read forty over the weekend.
Yes.
I thought to myself, is that consistent with the bit that you very fairly quoted in thirty-six from the air harbour case? If you've got, just briefly, if you've got in paragraph thirty-six, "A statutory body had no power to alienate lands which it had acquired for a statutory purpose or to grant any right over such land which was inconsistent with its use for such purposes." Isn't that wider?
Well, I mean, I see that if you pick up that sentence, it might look like it applies towards statutory bodies, whatever, but it's certainly not the law, it's certainly not the law.
There were.
But, for example, a local authority has no power to alienate lands or grant rights over them, there's no question that they can do that. So, the point I'm seeking to make is, it's not that that is always true, what's said in paragraph thirty-six, it's that where that is true, the statutory incompatibility principle runs. And it was true in New Haven, and it was true in BTC and Westmoreland, and it's definitely not true here.
Okay, thank you.
That's the critical point of distinction. Does that answer my Lord's question? So, 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 bringing out dramatically, as it were, what do I get from all of that? Well, look, it's definitely not the law that Mooreside Fields, and even if, whether it were in Scotland or England, it's definitely not the law that Mooreside Fields is immune from the creation of public or private easements. Whilst there is such a principle in relation to public and private easements, it's limited in the way that I've indicated and has no application to a case of this far. And it would, in my submission, then think back to what the New Haven principle is, it would be very surprising if the court, having drawn on that very case law to establish the incompatibility principle in relation to village greens, then decided to create a much, much wider principle than actually those cases would support. So, my Lords, my lady, can I then finish off on New Haven and then I can take the education statutes in this case relatively quickly?
Sorry, I just wasn't clear.
Of course, my Lord.
Why you say Mooreside Fields is not immune from public, creation of public or private easements.
Well, there's no.
If the creation of such an easement did conflict with the duties to which the land is held, why wouldn't that?
Well, there's no, there's certainly no case which supports the proposition that a public body, I mean, public rights of way are created, as the court will appreciate, there's an awful lot of public, local authority-owned land and for that matter publicly-held land up and down the country, including by the MOD as well as local authorities and so forth. Certainly no case which supports the proposition that merely because a public body holds land for some general statutory purpose, that it is thereby immune from registration as a green. That would be, I mean, if the court were to hold that, it would be.
What, I mean, we've been told about the safeguarding duties, for instance,
Yes.
in relation to children in respect of the playing fields. I'm slightly struggling with the idea that a private right of way can be created that would be flatly incompatible with safeguarding duties in respect of schoolchildren playing in a playing field.
But the, I mean, well, I mean, the only, I mean, I had rather taken this as read, I confess. So, the only, there is no case which supports the proposition that whatever the statutory purpose for which a public hold land, holds land, public body holds land, that that would make it immune from registration. I mean, to some extent, it's back to the, I think, the point I'm seeking to make is that if you look at the, and they're all statutory undertaking cases, not because there's something special about statutory undertakers as opposed to other public bodies, but because statutory undertakers are much more likely to hold land for these very specific purposes.
I mean, has it arisen, the, the, it's very important to distinguish cases like the Trappgrounds and Lewis, where there's no, although it's public land, they said, well, there's no incompatibility because it wasn't being held for purposes which conflict here. But, I mean, land held for a school, for education, is there any case where that's been held?
I mean, I don't want to say definitely there is or isn't because I don't know, I'd be, I'd be very surprised if the court would be willing to accept it, I can research the point after the hearing, but.
You see, the point you're making would apply to the school itself.
Well, sure, but.
Where, you know, already there's a school, school building, but there, I assume there is a playground as well, you seem to.
Well, I mean, if the public, if the public body is properly, properly exercising its, sorry, if the school it would now be were properly exercising its safeguarding functions, it's not going to be letting public, members of the public onto the.
That's what I was rather putting to you.
Yes. Well, sure, but that's.
So, doesn't that exclude the possibility of creation of a public or private right of way across the school land?
Well, the passages I have shown you support the principle that, I mean, effectively there's a, in these cases, there is a, there is a, there is a restriction on the public body dealing with the land. It can't alienate the land, or it can't sell it, it can't grant rights over it, full stop. Whereas, there's nothing to stop a public body for, I mean, it might have to do it in a way that, to be rational in accordance with its public law duties, but suppose that a public body decides that as part and parcel of the grant of planning permission for a new school, it will make provision for a corridor that runs across the land. So, there's no doubt that the land, and perhaps gated and so forth and protected so that the children are protected in accordance with safeguarding duties. That would be a perfectly lawful exercise, there's nothing to stop it granting a right of that kind. It may be that in a public law rationality sense, there would be circumstances in which it would be unlawful for it to do so because it's got these other duties which it's got to have in mind. But there's no absolute barrier to the grant of the rights. And what the statutory incompatibility principle involves in my submission is something rather more hard-edged than just, you know, it would be unlawful in a public law sense for the public body to do this, because apart from anything else, on one view, it's always going to be unlawful in a public law sense for a. to be unlawful in a public law sense for a, for a public body failing to comply with its fiduciary duties over land to tolerate use in such a way that rights are established over it. No one has ever suggested that that is sufficient for statutory incompatibility, and obviously... So that's about the detail of how you exercise your rights over the land. The point that my Lord, Lord Sales puts to me, it's about the detail of how the public body exercises its rights over the land, not about the basic, I mean, in these other cases, there's an absolutely hard-edged prohibition, you just cannot write, grant rights over the land at all, whether they...
That's true, but it's not contemplating our sort of case, which is, but the effect of saying you can register is still very serious, because it deprives the local authority of its ability to use the land for the purpose for which it appropriated it in the first place.
My lady, I don't dispute that, but I mean, that's why I started with the very basic point, but of course, for better or worse, and people will have different views, Parliament, by enacting section fifteen of the Commons Act, obviously saw a continued utility in the public to register a village green where the statutory conditions are met. And that's, and there's no bits, I'm so sorry, just let me just finish it, and that is not on the face of the statute, any different as between public or private land. I mean, it's very inconvenient for a private landowner to have a village green registered over its land, but we know that can happen, and that's the express purpose of section fifteen of the Commons Act. It's very inconvenient, no doubt, for a public body to have a village green registered over its land, but unless there's some pretty hard-edged basis to override the clear terms of section fifteen of two thousand and six Act, then that's what Parliament's decided.
Can I just put the other point of view, and I'm just trying to test arguments...
Of course, yes, yes.
...not indicating anything. Parliament obviously anticipated that the local authority, having acquired the land for the purpose of education, would be able to use it for that purpose. At a later point in time, you say, well, the mere fact it's got that...
I mean, the acquisition, on some level, I suppose that must be right, I mean, the acquisition powers and the appropriation powers are completely separate from the statutory duties that my lady and friend relies on. There are general, there are general powers in the Local Government Act, mostly, and then in some other places, to acquire and appropriate that.
How does that affect it? Because what we're looking at in the case of a local authority is a network of powers, it just doesn't have one piece of legislation.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that point doesn't help us. But when we look at the Act in its totality, there is nothing in the way of deregistration power to enable the local authority to go back and say, sorry, when this was registered as a village green, we weren't actually anticipating we would have to expand the school and take part of the land which is now being used as a village green, but now we need it, because the population has grown, we need to increase the size of the school and its facilities to give the students what is expected these days, therefore, it needs to be deregistered as a village green. That is not possible. Isn't that an indicator the other way, that Parliament wouldn't have wanted to put a local authority into that difficulty?
Obviously, it means that I can't, I can't say that the solution to all of this is that Parliament dealt with the potential problems that might arise by deregistration. In that sense, I accept that. But of course, if Parliament thought that was important, Parliament would have had, might have, I mean, again, it's a point about private and public. Parliament decided that this should be final, subject to pretty restrictive provisions about when land can be deregistered, and then you have to provide the public with alternatives, you have to swap and so forth. That's the context in which all of this arises. But I don't accept that you can derive, you can infer from the absence of a general power to deregister land, or the narrow nature of the general power, anything about Parliament's intention vis-à-vis the kind of situation...
Well, we have to look at the Act as a...
Of course, I completely accept. Can I, I'm conscious of time, and I, can I just, since you were in New Haven, by making slightly more general points, I just ask the Court now, having seen all of that, to think back to my starting point, which was section fifteen of two thousand and six Act. Section fifteen of the two thousand and six Act is an extremely clear provision which applies on its face, in the circumstances of this case, to require registration of a green. Obviously, I accept, and not getting into my Lord Wilson's question about whether you describe it as an exception or whatever, but obviously I accept that in New Haven, the Court recognised some limits on that. So the question that the Court faces is, do we look for, are we talking about the narrow, are we talking about a narrow construction of all of that, or are we taking a wider approach to all of that? The submission I simply want to make is that if you look at it in the narrow sense, the New Haven judgment makes perfect sense. One can immediately see why the Court decided the case as it did, notwithstanding the strong starting point of section fifteen of the two thousand and six Act. In other words, notwithstanding that on its face, registration might be required, the Court is faced with something equally strong, a positive clash of statutory regimes, which leaves the Court with no choice but to choose which of them applies. Whereas, if the Court, if the Court was laying down the wider approach, then in my respectful submission, it's very difficult to understand how it got there, because for the reasons that I've sought to develop, it can't derive that from the English and Scottish case law by analogy, because the principle under the English and Scottish case law is much more narrow. And nor can it derive it from any kind of necessary implication to deal with the fact that the two statutory regimes are quite literally inconsistent. You've just, you've got duties under one, you've got to do, you've got duties under the other regime, you've got to do them, but you just can't do both, so you face that basically. You can completely understand why that requires a narrow exception to the section fifteen requirements, but on the wider principle, and it's a sense of rhetorical question for my lady and friend, what is the logic behind the development of this much wider principle? I respectfully suggest that none appears, and none appears from the judgment if it is indeed wider than I say. Now, it doesn't mean I'm asking you to overturn New Haven, obviously I'm not doing that, but it is quite important when one is thinking about what New Haven decides.
So you are saying really that we should treat paragraph ninety-three as being broader than is actually the ratio in the case?
Sorry.
Broader than the ratio in the case, we have to...
Well, I mean, if necessary, yes, I mean, my primary case is, you can read paragraph ninety-three in the way I sought to develop, which is just the narrow ratio, but there it is. Can I then just come back to the, not the facts of this case, but the legal regime we're dealing with? So, I think, you've seen the relevant education legislation in its original, I'm not going to go back to it, it's volume two, tabs thirty to thirty-six, but I don't think it's necessary to turn it up. It's also set out in the appellate case, but for these purposes, can I just invite you to see, to reflect on what I've, the way I've set it out in paragraph forty-five of my written case, M S two two oh six?
Yes.
And I set out that what I understood to be the main three provisions relied upon there, and it's fair to say, I'm picking up, Mr Edwards also relies on the safeguarding duty, so that could go in as, notionally as Roman four. These are general duties. General duty to ensure efficient primary and secondary education in the area. Section fourteen, slightly more specific, but still very general, requires the Council to secure that sufficient schools are available, et cetera, and including in terms of number, character and equipment. Section five four two is about playing fields, well, I'm not sure we get anything out of that. And then there's also the safeguarding duties. But then in paragraph forty-six of my written case, I'd make a series of points about it. So, first of all, in contrast to, in contrast to the New Haven case, these are not obligations which attach to Moreside Fields in any specific, in any way. Indeed, they are not obligations relating to land at all, and I accept in that paragraph that you've got to, you've got to hold land to achieve them, but the obligations themselves for statutory purposes are not purposes relating to land. Secondly, Roman two, they're entirely general in character, and so, among other things, there's no scope here for the principle which we saw in paragraph ninety-three, is very important in New Haven, that the general scheme of the village green legislation should yield to some more specific scheme relating to Moreside Fields. That's quite important, because if that principle can't apply, and in my submission it plainly can't, then it's very difficult, then on the broad reading of, on the broad understanding of New Haven, you end up in the very odd situation where a very specific principle is relied upon, general yields to specific, but it produces a result whereby, which is a much more general principle than that, that principle. Thirdly, the obligation, the question, don't impose any limitation on the Council's voluntary dealing with Moreside Fields, for reasons that I've given, and therefore there's no basis on which it would be prevented from granting public or private rights of way. I appreciate that subject to the questions my Lord Sales asked, but I do maintain that point. And it follows, I say certainly, that if you seek to imply the English or Scottish case law on statutory incompatibility, there'd be nothing to prevent the creation of a public or private right of way over this land. So in those circumstances, it'd be very hard in my submission if there was a statutory incompatibility on the facts of this case, but the question that the Court must ask, applying the New Haven principle in the way that I say it should be applied, is a simple one. Do any of these statutory purposes, which as I say are entirely general in character, are any of them inconsistent with, incompatible with the registration of this land as a green? And the answer is no. The general duty to secure education is not incompatible with the registration of this land as a green. Maybe somewhat inconvenient to it, like all sorts of legal obligations a local authority could become subject to, but it's not incompatible with it. And, I can repeat the points, but the same is true for all of the provisions that are relied upon. And on that basis, I say, the incompatibility point doesn't run. Ladies, those are my submissions on first issue, I'll take the second issue much more swiftly, unless of course the Court has any questions at this stage.
Not at this stage, Mr Beale. I'm glad you're going to take the second issue quickly.
I will.
You've set out your points very clearly in your admirable case, we may, we will, well, we've got to deal with it.
Yes.
But it's not a matter of great legal importance.
No, it's not.
And there's, you know, a lot to concentrate on, from the other advocates, on the big points, so please, take it shortly.
My Lord, so, as set out in the appellate written case, this involves a whole series of sub-issues, but as it was developed orally, they were not all concentrated upon. So I'm not going to deal with all of the sub-issues, I respectfully commend the Court to my written case on the issues which I don't touch on here. What I think potentially survives in the way that the Court, no doubt, very sensibly, Mr Edwards presented his case yesterday, are effectively two of them, one more important than the other. The first is standard of review. Is there any basis for the Court to adopt any other standard of review than the rationality standard? I'll take that pretty shortly, as Mr Edwards did, but I think I need to say something about it. Secondly, assuming I'm right, that it is the rationality standard, was the decision of the inspector here irrational? On standard of review, for reasons I've set out in the written case, there is no principle of public law more well-established, that when a judicial review court considers a challenge to a factual finding of a, of a public body acting within jurisdiction, the public body now being my client's registration authorities, then it can only interfere with that finding of fact, either of course, if there's some sort of misdirection or failure to have regard to material...
Mr Beale, we're well aware of that.
Exactly, exactly. Or secondly, on the basis of rationality. And the inspector in this case reviewed all of the evidence that was relied upon by my lady, or by the Council. There's nothing that it failed to have regard to, and so I respectfully adopt the point that my Lord, Lord Sales put to my lady and friend in argument, which is that you're just left with rationality, that's the only possible standard of review that can be valid. So the question for the Court is simply whether the inspector's finding was irrational or not. Now, in relation to that question, the important point in my submission starts with this issue, which is not an issue of general importance in and of itself, it's about the detail of particular fact, factual finding.
You're dropping your voice, I couldn't hear that.
I'm so sorry, I think I'm just getting a little dry, forgive me.
What was the point you were making?
So, this issue, the rationality question, was considered very carefully by both Mr Justice Ousley at first instance, and by the Court of Appeal on appeal, and in particular by Mr Justice Ousley, who's very experienced in this area of local government, it was dealt with in paragraphs fifty-seven to sixty-three of his judgment, and that's M S two three oh five. Two three oh five through to two three oh, just over to two three oh seven. So the primary submission I make is that there's really no basis to interfere with the careful conclusions reached by the judge on that question. He accepts paragraph fifty-seven, he expresses the view that he might himself have reached a different question on whether the land was held for educational purposes. Completely properly, having made that point in paragraph fifty-seven, the question he finds that he has to answer is whether the finding was irrational, and the Court doesn't need me to labour the point that the rationality standard is a very high one indeed.
I mean, it might be said it's a very slightly surprising conclusion for the judge to reach, since in paragraph fifty-seven, he states positively, "I can see no real reason not to conclude that the acquisition was for educational purposes."
Well, so, having made those points, he deals with why he doesn't find it to be irrational in paragraph sixty-one to sixty-three, and, I mean, the Court will no doubt read that in its own time, I won't try and read it...
We've read it before.
In that case, you won't need to, but in so far as necessary. But the essence of the points that are made there is that, as Mr Edwards accepts, first of all, he bears, he or rather his client bore the burden of proof on this issue, that relevant information was all held by the Council. Secondly, paragraph sixty-two, and it goes to paragraph one one seven of her decision, of the inspector's decision, the inspector was entitled to take the view that the Council would have had or should have had more information in its possession, and so its failure to bring forward more material, for example, a resolution, was surprising and called into question whether the, whether the acquisition had indeed been... So standing back from all of that, the simple, the simple point which Mr Justice Ousley addresses, and which this Court ultimately may have, has to decide, whether the material was such as to compel the conclusion, or whether it fell short of that. Now, I completely accept, such material as existed did point it, did tend to support the idea that the land had been acquired for educational purposes, that is true, I'm not denying that, that's the point that Mr Justice Ousley made. But inspector, an inspector faced with that material, but concerned that some material is missing, as it were, that there ought to have been other things which would have demonstrated the, the purpose of the acquisition better, is entitled, in my submission, to stand back and say, well, all things in the round, Council's got the obligation to demonstrate this. I'm... this, I'm not satisfied that it's discharged the burden of proof. And that is what the inspector did, I mean, I won't go back to the passages in her judgment, but that's what it announced. Now, if the Court thinks that's irrational, so be it, but in my submission, bearing in mind the relatively high, the very high standard of irrationality, it falls short of that. And, and, and that is a submission which Mr Justice Ousley accepted, or that's the reasoning which he adopted in his judgment. Court of Appeal approved at paragraph 64 of their judgment, they don't add to it, as I say, but they approve it. Those are my submissions on that issue.
Well, thank you for keeping it so short, but we, we well bear in mind the detail of your written case on that.
I understand why the Court doesn't.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Beale. There are no questions for you, so thank you.
Someone will come back on section 10 of the Commons Registration Act, will they?
Yes, we'll try and, so that's a question about whether it's final.
Well, I mean, just where one finds the provision which says what the effect of registration is, which used to be in section 10 of the 1965 Act.
Yes, we'll, we'll check it, my lord.
Thank you. So, Mr Westaway, you've got 10 minutes before the shorter adjournment.
I will make what use I can of it, my lord. I'm asking, note, if that helps your lordships and others, I don't suppose it's a final word, on conclusiveness, that section 18 of the Commons Act deals with conclusiveness of the register. I don't think section 18 is in the bundle that I'm sure.
Well, it doesn't deal with village greens, I don't think, does it?
I'm sure I can check, just in case.
Yeah, I'm just very surprised that it's not sitting there, obviously, I did have a look at section 18.
My lord, I'll want to start with a very general point. I thought, I will not repeat any of the points that he makes, except by, very, very briefly, to note my agreement, I agree that section 15 is the starting point here, and there is of course, behind section 15, a, a policy. That is to register land which has for a period of 20 years been used as of right freely by local inhabitants. In almost all cases where land is held by a public authority or statutory undertaker for statutory purposes, there will be no issue with whether those undoubtedly strict criteria are met. Options to use, signs may have been put up, the use may be obviously permissive, the use may not cover the full 20-year period required, and now with the 2013 amendments, maybe there's some sort of planning role that relates to the land. In these two cases, so Lancashire, which of course is the case that I appear in respect of, and also the NHS case, there was very little or no use of the land in question for statutory purposes, which is why this issue arises. The distinction is in Lancashire, there was some educational use, in particular of area, what we call an area B, I think very, C and D. In NHS, as I understand the position, there was, there was no health use of, of that land. So this isn't, insofar as local authorities' use of their land for statutory purposes, something that is going to arise on the terms of section 15 itself, in every case where the property owns the land with statutory purpose. It relates to cases where the land is owned intentionally for a purpose, condition two, it is not mandatory. On Lancashire, I want to make one factual point, and this is of some significance. It requires us, my lord, just to remind ourselves of the application decision, so that's the core volume, the application decision itself, it starts MS 2318. It's core volume 2318. The decision is 22nd of September 2015, application 2010. The point is that in this case, the inspector made no finding of incompatibility, she found there was going to be certain educational purposes and use. And I just want to make sure these references are before the Court, they are, say, he was setting out, parus 9 to 11 in my case, MS 2222. The inspector goes through the various requirements she was, had to look at, and she starts with the level of use.
Where, where they set it in your case, page?
It's parus 9 to 11.
Thank you.
Starts with looking at use, that starts on MS 2323, para 33. She's looking at the quantity, quantity, particularly quantity here, and concludes at para 59, that in relation to areas A, B, C and D, the public use over 20 years and the evidence of it is compelling. The inspector then goes on, my lord, to look at the question of as of right, that includes whether it's been challenged or contentious, whether the use is permissive. She starts with challenges, and she considers those, first of all signs, then challenges specifically, and she comes to conclusions on that at parus 96 to 97. I draw attention to para 96, MS 2334. This is in relation, my lord, to the, to area B, where there was most evidence of use by the school, outdoor classes, et cetera. And you'll see at the bottom of that paragraph, she notes there was no policy of challenging users, and considers that both school users and local inhabitants recreating on the land showed courtesy to each other, avoiding conflict. Then goes on, this is MS 2335, and following to look at permission, question of permission, it's all of that, but she comes to the conclusion, I draw attention to para 105, MS 2336, rejecting a submission made by the Council, and it's the middle of para 105, the general impression is one of peaceful coexistence, so consistent with what she'd found earlier. All of that, my lord, feeds into the inspector's conclusions on statutory incompatibility, because of course, this was a case where the inspector considered New Haven, it was put before her, she worked through it. Albeit, I think, in part, in the alternative. So I want to draw your attention to MS 2339, it's 119 to 122. It's the Court either to scan through them or check them at a subsequent time. The inspector, my lord, heard evidence from local residents and teachers, so from both sides, over eight days. She undertook multiple site visits, she had a good understanding of what use was made of this land. She concluded the evidence was simply insufficient to show that areas A, B, C or D were needed for educational uses that would prevent recreation. That, my lord, was the basis on which this challenge was considered in the courts below. Note in particular before Mr Justice Ousley, para 82, that's MS 2313, para 82. My lord, questions have risen, I think, during the course of these proceedings, because I don't think it particularly arises on the facts of this case, as to the timing of when, when a decision maker should consider statutory incompatibility. It doesn't arise on the facts of this case, because no issue is taken with the inspector considering the statutory incompatibility when it arose before her. And she considered this on the basis that I've outlined and came to the conclusions that I've outlined. So it doesn't fall necessarily to be considered, no one's arguing that the position is the position now, or that things have materially changed from what is best. Just to be clear on that point, in, there's not a clear view in the authorities as to when, if one likes, for considering statutory incompatibility is. The clearest indication of it is the British Transport Commission case, which is significant one, because it's an English authority too, because it explains an important part of the conclusion in New Haven. And in the British Transport Commission case, if I can just give your lordships two references, that case is at, starts at MS 1032, it's in volume two of the authorities.
Yes.
Vice Count Simmons leaves open the question of timing, of incompatibility in that case, or incapacity in that case, at MS 1050 to 1051. But Lord Radcliffe, MS 1059, suggests that it is the point of challenge that it should be considered. Lord Cohen, MS 1066, refers to the date of trial. And I think it's fair to say that neither Lord Keith nor Lord Morton are absolutely clear. In Rambler's case, which my learned friend, Mr Beale, referred to, Mr Justice Dove engaged with this point and concluded, he took the view, that it was the date essentially of trial, when it's being considered by an inspector, that statutory incompatibility falls to be considered. In my submission, there is at least a decent argument to say it should be the date when the right accrues to make an application for village greens, that'd be either the end of the 20-year period, or when the application is made. Because under the Commons Act 2006, it is, the, the right is to make an application.
Well, thanks for helping us on that point, which as you say is to the side. So, Mr Westaway, would that be a convenient moment to rise for the shorter adjournment?
Yes.
Thank you.